We're about to kick off the beginning of our March 5th, 2020 council meeting. City Clerk, would you do roll call?
Councilmember Brettafield.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Sparza.
President.
Councilmember Karvasi. Councilmember Soria. Council Vice President Capriello.
I'm here.
And President Arias.
Here.
All right, and Councilmember Karbasi is here too. Next, we'll do the invocation. Pastor Lewis, are you here yet? Come on up. It's Pastor Lewis from the First Missionary Baptist Church. Welcome to present the city council.
Good morning. It's power heads. My most righteous heavenly Father, how majestic is your name and all the earth. We humbly come before your throne this morning to ask for guidance and direction. Lord, we thank you for the blessing that you have granted us to live in this great country, the United States of America. Thank you for all of the men and women who serve in our military so that we might live in this great land of freedom. We ask that you would protect them and watch over them as they defend this great land. Father, we thank you for the police officers and firefighters who serve this community so that we might live in safety. Please be with them and guide them in their steps as they put their lives on the line for us each and every day. Your word declares that blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. And I pray this morning for this country that it might put you at the center of everything that it does. While we live in a time of great division, let us lay aside our pride and seek you because you are the one who can unify us, your people. I ask that you would be with this state in which we are blessed to live. And Lord, we thank you for these community leaders that are gathered here today. We humbly ask that you give them wisdom from heaven so that they might know how to handle the critical decisions that they have to make. God, please help the community of Fresno. As there is much wickedness in the world that we live, let this be a place that your face shines bright. We ask all these things in accordance with your will and help us to seek that more than anything else. It is in the name of your Son, Jesus, the only Savior, we pray these things.
Thank you, Pastor. Your invocation. City Clerk, we have changes to the agenda.
Let's see, have a couple of changes. The closed session item is no longer time. It's going to be at your discretion, Council President. The proclamation for Women's History Month is removed from the agenda. Also, File ID 2000320, Item 1N, which is a resolution dissolving the Capitol Project Oversight Board for the City of Fresno, has been removed from the agenda. We are also removing Item 1L, File ID 2000324, and also Item 1K, which is adding a parking lot to the Surplus Act. Those are the changes I have.
Thank you. Do any councilmembers have changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Can I jump in for a second?
Give me a second. So move. There's a second to approve the agenda?
First.
I'll second it. Any opposition to the agenda?
Well, I have a question on, did you say you were removing 1K and 1L?
1K is being modified to include parking lot 2 into the list of surplus properties, and 1L is being tabled, yes.
It's being removed from the agenda?
Yes.
Is there a reason why 1L is being removed?
I'm requesting it's being tabled. We met with the applicant yesterday. We asked for some additional information. They haven't provided it yet, so we need some more time for the item.
And then declaring Lot 2 a surplus property as well?
Yes.
Okay, and was anyone on the administration notified of that?
No, but we can discuss it when we discuss the item. 1K estatalo. So we're happy to change it if the administration doesn't support that.
Okay, so for me, I would like to keep 1L on because this is, I think, the second time we're pulling it, and I'd like to address it rather than just removing it. We could, I mean, make it a contested item and we can discuss further the removal. So I don't know if we need to take a vote or if you're willing to leave it on for a contested item. What would?
I'd like to take it off and give the applicant more time and give us more time to figure out some of the details. So, there's a motion. There's a second.
Well, I think Mr. Brettafield is going to make a motion. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to keep 1L on the agenda. You know what? I'll second.
There's a second. Any opposition? Okay, 1L stays. Thank you, councilmember. Any other changes by the council? Agenda's been approved. All right. Ceremonial presentation.
Well, good morning, everyone. How are you? Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
One more time, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
There we go. Now we're awake. We're alive. This is a great time, actually the best time of the day is right now because we do these fantastic ceremonies, and we're acknowledging people that are really, really major contributors to our community, and we couldn't do this without that type of support. So with that, we're going to, my colleague here is going to join me this presentation, and we called each other this morning. We'll find our colors, right? All right? Bulldogs rule. And anyway, today is a great day for us to share a partnership that's happening with Fresno State and the students at the university. And I have Dean Dennis Neff here and student Senator Jacqueline Taylor. I want you guys to come down and join us, and we're going to celebrate National Ag Day in the city of Fresno. Ag Day is about recognizing and celebrating contributions of agriculture in our community, in our everyday lives. So it's about understanding and that how food is produced, which is literally in our community farm to table, and just the importance and the essential role of agriculture with everything that we touch. We're an ag community. We have been and always will be. We're the breadbasket of the world, and a lot of the innovative ideas come directly from the university. So with that, the Jordan College of Agriculture and Science and Technology, I have a note here, moves forward and will continue to be innovative and keep Fresno's agriculture in the forefront of the world. I think that's a fairly accurate statement. And with that, I'd like to have the dean say a few words.
Well, thank you, Vice President Capriello. As dean of the Jordan College, I work with 2,300 students on campus. Some of those are really good students and they go on to great things. One of them was Councilmember Karbasi. I had him in class many years ago. Another one is Jackie Taylor, who is our current senator for ASI, and I'm going to give her the microphone to say a few words.
I just wanted to start off today by saying thank you for having us and thank you for announcing the proclamation again this year. Just a reminder, we are the only CSU in all 23 CSUs that celebrates National Ag Day. So the fact that Fresno City Council appreciates this and really allows us to be here is such an incredible thing. I also wanted to invite everybody, councilmembers included, to our National Ag Day celebration on March 24th on our campus in the Memorial Garden from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Thank you.
Ditto.
I just want to add, if you go to the university, they have the market there, the Gibson Market. The Gibson family donated the facility, and there's so many products there that you have no idea how great Fresno State is and the production and the ultimate distribution at the Gibson Center. So we all know about corn, right? Everybody loves Fresno State corn, you know, it's the best. But there's a lot of other products there, from ice cream to jerky to our hams.
Strawberries are on in two weeks.
There you go, and this is organic, truly organic. So with that, we'll read the proclamation.
Whereas American agriculture celebrated its first National Agriculture Day in 1973 to increase public awareness of agriculture role in society and in the community. And whereas Fresno County is known for its fertile soils, long growing seasons, and a developed surface and underground supply, these factors enabled the county farmers and ranchers to produce more each, more year round with a variety of crops feeding Californians as well as the world. And whereas the Fresno County has more than 5,600 farms, which produce over 400 different crops, some of the county's top crops include almonds, grapes, poultry, cattle, and calves, tomato, milk, pistachios, garlic, oranges, peaches. And whereas the agricultural education in Fresno helps to produce the next generation of farmers, ranchers, and innovators, California State University Fresno State is fortunate to have the Jordan College of Agriculture Sciences. And whereas Fresno State students are revolutionizing the future of farming through innovations such as robotics and bridging the gap between agricultural technology and technology by developing solutions to practical rural problems. And whereas we also recognize the student-produced products that are sold at the Fresno State Gibson Market. And whereas we encourage all citizens to be supportive and appreciative of the incredible contribution farmers, ranchers, agricultural workers, and Fresno students make daily to better our community. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the Fresno City Council members encourage all Californians to take time to learn more about agriculture, starting from where food originate to the endless agricultural career opportunities across California. Be it further resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 24th, 2020, to be National Ag Day in the city of Fresno.
Thank you all very much for that, and good to see you, Mr. President. Thank you, Senator. Appreciate that. I still have some details on your performance in class, young man. Yeah, we all kind of curious about that, so. Did you take it once or twice? Just kidding.
Councilwoman Soria, we have the International Women's Day for the Sikh 2020.
Good morning, everyone. I have the pleasure of doing the following two proclamations. I'm going to go ahead and call up all the women that are here representing the International Sikh Women's Day, so if you guys all want to come on up. So I want to welcome these fabulous women here to City Hall. I will say that Fresno is extremely proud to be home to one of the largest Sikh populations outside of Punjab, India. Today, in light of Women's History Month, if you all didn't know, March is Women's History Month. We want to celebrate the community organizing done by local organizations such as the Sikh Women's Organization of Central California, as well as the Chikara Movement. These organizations have created a much-needed safe space and platform for Punjabi Sikh women of all ages to uplift and empower one another. The accomplishments of Sikh women have been often overlooked in the past, and these organizations have taken the time to highlight and recognize them. I will say that actually, was it last year or the year before, we got also an opportunity to acknowledge two fabulous Sikh women that have done a tremendous amount of work and have just had significant impact in the lives of many of the residents that live not only here in Fresno, but up and down the Central Valley. Throughout the events that these organizations put together, Sikh women have successfully created not only a network, but a community that is committed to raising the future generations of cowards. So I would like to now acknowledge all the women. You guys can go ahead and introduce yourselves, and then whoever wants to say a couple of words before the proclamation is ready. So we'll start off with Raj.
Good morning. On behalf of the Sikh Women's Organization of Central California, thank you, thank you, thank you. Our organization was founded about 15 years ago by Gudi Siddhu and Gudi Ranu. Some of you may know that our founder recently passed away unexpectedly on October 6th. It's only been five months for us, and we are still grieving and mourning. On Saturday, we will be celebrating International Women's Day. We expect about 200 ladies from all over Fresno County, not just our generation, but our daughter's generation, and we have three artists coming from the Bay Area. Last year, we raised monies for scholarships, and we're focusing on low-income high school students so that we can help them go on to college. And this is Gudi Ranu, Tujinder Purwal, Gamal Pangu, and Ammu Matharu, and we are a board of seven volunteers. We are a 501(c)(3). Ammu?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for recognizing us, Councilmember Soria. It's an honor to be here and to get the recognition from the Fresno City Council. We're a large, growing, young immigrant community, like so many immigrant communities in the valley, and I think our organization is trying to specifically engage our young women, and actually, women of all generations. We're an intergenerational organization, but one of the main things that we're trying to do is build our community, uplift and empower young women and families, and also come together as new Americans, because we are part of this community, we love this city, and the city is our home too. So thank you.
And then we have folks representing the Chikara Movement.
I like to say I'm part of SWAC too, as a member, but my name is Kamul Jitkar, and I'm part of Chikara Movement here locally in Fresno.
And this is Naveed Kaur, and I am the Chikara Movement Club President on Fresno State's campus.
Yeah, and we're a youth organizing and leadership organization here in Fresno, founded, and we actually are statewide. I'm happy to say that I work with predominantly women staff who inspire me every day to do better and be better. We work with youth from anywhere from middle school all the way up until college age and beyond, and I work with tremendously very smart, amazing young women who are always excited to lead and be, you know, in position where they want to create change in their communities. Currently, we're doing a lot of census work, so I've seen these women, young women, come forth and take lead there, so, and I'm just very thankful to Councilmember Soria for recognizing us today. Thank you.
So, do you want to say something?
We have a token of appreciation for...
You know, in India especially, like when you come somebody to the gurdwara or something, they honor them with, we call it srupa, but this is not a srupa, that's related to the religion stuff. But this is, we just want to honor her, like little thing from us, so I'm going to like give it to her, like she can use it as a scarf or anything, but I'm going to go like this, so.
That's why we didn't gift wrap it.
Thank you so much. Now, this will be very helpful, so when I do go visit, I was actually just there this past weekend, so it'll come in much handy, so thank you so much. I will now will go to the clerk if you could read the proclamation for the record. Thank you.
Whereas the Central Valley is home to one of the largest populations of Sikh women outside of Punjab, India. Having the first, having first set foot in California in the early 1900s, Sikh women have since successfully built a network and community for themselves, creating a home away from home for the Pujami Sikh disposal. And whereas it is through events such as the annual International Women's Day lunch and various fundraisers in which local Sikh women are able to highlight and celebrate the often overlooked accomplishments of cars, the space allow them to build confidence, develop leadership skills, and overcome issues that are specific to Punjabi Sikh women. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and city council hereby supports the Sikh Women Organization of Central California and the Chikara Movement in the efforts to empower uplift with Sikh women. The city of Fresno encourages its residents to recognize and celebrate the contributions of Sikh women, hereby proclaiming March 5th, 2020, to be International Sikh Women's Day
Councilwoman Soria, you have the floor with the Rogue Festival Week.
Yes, so I'm, the next proclamation I have. Great, thank you. So now I'll invite our other special guest here representing the Rogue Festival. If you want to come on down. Good morning. So I get to do this, I think this is my now sixth year doing this, so I'm very excited to be able to recognize the Rogue Performance, or the Rogue Festival in the Tower District that takes place, and it runs from March 6th, which starts tomorrow, through March 14th. So for those folks that haven't ever had a chance to go to any of the events that the Rogue Festival puts together, please check them out. They are, as I mentioned, throughout the Tower District. This is the 19th year, which is remarkable that we're celebrating 19 years here of the annual Rogue Performance Festival in the city of Fresno. In the past years, the festival has issued over 9,000 tickets to their shows. The Rogue Festival provides one-of-a-kind art experience through every form such as entertainment, theater, music, dance, spoken word, performance art, puppetry, physical theater, and magic acts. Every year, the city of Fresno has issued a proclamation in support of the Rogue Festival for not only its contributions to local art and culture, but also the impacts, the benefits, the economic impacts that it brings to the Tower District and the city as a whole. So I want to thank all the folks that are here this morning representing, and then Board Member Jaguar Bennett and the staff members for being here to receive this proclamation. And then if you guys could just tell us about maybe some highlights of the events that you guys are going to be having throughout the week, and anything else you guys want to share about the Rogue Festival.
I'd like to thank Councilmember Soria and the council for honoring the Rogue Festival in this way. We've got lots of very exciting shows coming up. As Councilmember Soria says, we have a vast array of entertainment, spoken word, puppetry, magic, music, theater, dance, and things are simply too unusual to really sufficiently describe. We've got an amazing puppet show that we're assured is the most bizarre thing that has ever been seen, and we have numerous performers, both local and from around the country and around the world, coming to Fresno to perform for the Fresno community. The Rogue Festival is, I think, a wonderful event. It brings the world to Fresno. It shows Fresno as an arts center, and it is a wonderful stimulant for the economy in the Tower District. Now, we are having a teaser show tonight at the Tower Theater, where you can see little snippets of Rogue performances. We have over 50 performers, over 200 separate performances, happening over 10 days in 12 different venues. So there's a lot to see. We did bring some of our programs for this year's festival, and we will, if we may, leave them here for people at the cake, and we hope to see you at our teaser show tonight. You can also see all about what is happening at this year's Rogue Festival at our website, FresnoRogueFestival.com. Oh, yeah, at 6:30, I should mention the time, but that's also on our website. And I'd like to very much thank our executive director, Amber Street, our many staff members who came here today, and we are an all-volunteer organization, and I'd like to thank all the many community volunteers who make this event possible, and thank you.
So thank you so much for being here. We look forward to being out there and coming and seeing some of the shows, and we encourage everyone, if you haven't had a chance, to come out to the Tower District to enjoy one of their shows that they put on during the festival, please visit them. With that, Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas the 19th Annual Rogue Performance Festival will take place in the Tower District within the city of Fresno this March 6th through 14th, 2020. And whereas the Rogue Festival is one of the several fringe festivals found all across the world, celebrating independent artists rather than established art institutes, who through their art challenge heal, transform, and uplift our community. This is a non-juried festival which allows artists to be free with their chosen subjects and let the attendees decide for themselves what they like and don't like. And whereas Rogue audiences will experience every form of art, and entertainment, theater, music, dance, spoken word, performance art, puppetry, physical theater, and magical acts. In the past years, the Rogue Performance Festival has issued over 9,000 tickets for their shows. The venues for the acts vary from clubs, coffee shops, art gallery, and local black fox theaters. And there, and whereas many of these acts are originally written and developed by the artists performing them, which means the audience enjoys art of a kind they will never experience anywhere else. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor, city council, does hereby recognize the importance of the Rogue Performance Festival in showcasing independent artists in our community, and do proclaim March 6th through the 14th, 2020, to be Rogue Festival
Thank you, council. Now we're ready for councilmember reports and comments. Any councilmember wishing to be recognized?
I poked a.
Councilmember Capriello?
Thank you. On Saturday, it was my privilege to be out at Woodward Park for the Support Blue Run. They sold over 5,000 tickets for that event, and it helps the Fresno Police Department Chaplaincy, which is a, I call it a social part of the police department as opposed to the law enforcement part with providing safety for our city. And what that means is they reach out to families and the people that had hit hard times. For instance, a police officer went to a home and the children in the home didn't have beds. So he was able, through the chaplaincy and the money raised from Support Blue, to purchase beds and bedding for this family, for the children, so they have a place to sleep instead of the floor. So there's many, many stories like that. So the chaplaincy is a great part of the police department, and it was great to see all the families there. My colleagues, I remember Brettafield was there, I remember Karbasi. I actually got behind, there were free pancakes and sausage, being a former Sambo's cook, chef. They gave me their spatulas, so I was able to produce a ton of pancakes. I think my colleague here was learning the flip process. If he's got a little more wrist action, he'll be there with us next year, but it was a great event. We had a lot of fun. Last night was a really good game, I don't know if you saw it, Mountain West Championship, Fresno State Women versus Fresno Boise State's Women. Went into overtime, a great game. Unfortunately, we came up a little bit short, so they got the NCAA bid. However, Fresno State's Maddie Udi, she was named Mountain West Player of the entire Mountain West. She is the Player of the Year. Exciting to watch, especially last night. And Haley Cavender was named Mountain West Freshman of the Year. So these are some great women, great representatives of the university. This close to the NCAA tournament, we might get a bid from the tournament. We keep our fingers crossed, and it was really exciting. I was on the edge of my seat. Actually took some shots. Of course, my shots miss, theirs hit, so it was fun. Also, congratulation to Fresno State's Debbie Astone. She received the Halk Award from Fresno Compact, and she's truly a champion for our students at Fresno State and for our community. The hours she puts in are incredible, and she's just, she's a true champion for our community, and she was, last year, my selection as Woman of the Year for District 4, and that's coming up on March 19th. We're going to celebrate some fantastic women in our community, and each one of us will have a representative and honor them accordingly on March 19th. Thank you, Council President.
Councilmember Karbasi, I'm going to ask for a favor before you speak. If you can go down and recognize our SPCA Pet of the Month, they're here, last minute, but we want to make sure we recognize... If you can go down and recognize our SPCA Pet of the Month, they're here last minute, but we want to make sure we recognize them. Thank you, councilmember.
I'll do it if you join me.
Yes, let's go.
Yes, of course. His name is Max. So this year's Max, he is a toy poodle mix. He's about 11 months old. He was an owner surrender because he's a little bit hyper, nothing that a little bit of training can't work through. And really big things happening this month for the SBCAs. We do have our new annual golf tournament as a fundraiser to be able to help out animals like this. And the majority of our proceeds are going towards opening our new Spain neuter clinic to be able to help the Central Valley get their animals fixed, help keep the stray population down, and just make sure that these animals have a safe space to stay.
Can I keep him?
Let me do an adoption real quick and get him.
Okay. No, we have three rescues ourselves, and we're grateful for everything you guys do because there's lots of great pets and they're like my kids. They are like people. I don't care what anyone else says. So we're glad to have you here, and thank you for everything that you do for the community.
I'll switch with you. How about that?
For the record, he's better looking than Member Chavez. Well, thank you for coming today. And as you know, we're working on a new animal shelter facility for the city, something finally that has been due for a long time. In the meantime, we still support SPCA and all the work that they do. So thank you for saving all the animals. And I have a rescue tuba mine. It's not as good looking. That's what happens. Thank you.
I think that dog showers more often than you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez, for that reminder. Councilmember Carbasi, since you're better looking than the puppy, we are next up.
No comment.
All right, Councilmember Sparza, you're up next.
Yes, so it's, I forget if it's one day or if it's the whole week, but it's Read Across America. And so last Friday, I went out early in the morning, read to students at Burroughs Elementary. And then this Tuesday, read to a couple more classrooms in my district, including some fifth graders at Leavenworth Elementary. It was really great because it was election day, and I read them this book called Vote. And it was this really fun book about a mayoral election, a local mayoral election. So it was really fun, very relevant. Kids learned a lot, and so just wanted to let folks know. I read to three classrooms this year during Read Across America, and I encourage everyone who has a chance to get away from work for just a bit to do that each week during, each year during this particular week. Also wanted to thank the city staff for facilitating a very, very successful tree planting effort on Saturday. Planted 180 trees along the McKenzie Trail. I had a ton of volunteers, good outreach effort. I think it went very smoothly. So I was there. I know the mayor showed up. So again, I wanted to thank city staff for that.
Councilmember Soria, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just wanted to announce that on Monday, I will be holding my annual, my sixth annual Fresno Women Leading the Way Celebration, as I mentioned earlier. In March, we celebrate Women's History Month. And so I will be recognizing eight women who have excelled in the field of work. And actually, one of the members from, or staff members from the Police Department, Lydia Carrasco, Deputy Chief, I will be recognizing her there. So we invite folks, it's going to be here at City Hall in the evening. The other thing that I want to announce that is super exciting, because this was a very important issue discussed last year, was, is the Fire Station 18 is going to be, we're going to break ground on Monday as well. So just so the public knows, we're going to be moving forward with that, and that's happening on Monday in the morning. And so we're excited. Fire Station 18 is in my district, but it does serve the west side of the city. And so we're very, very excited that we're kind of staying on track with the timeline that we promised all the folks. And so proud that that's happening. Thank you.
Any of the councilmembers wish to be recognized? All right. Seeing none, just a quick update for the general public in the council. Today, it's our first day where we're going to try a new system to the 21st century process for speaking and addressing the council. What you will see is, instead of having yellow cards and us having to figure out exactly people's handwriting and how to pronounce their names when we can't read the writing, we have iPads available in the back. They will sign in digitally, and then their names will be pulled up once the agenda item is being heard. So the whole council will get to see who has signed up for what items, whether they support or oppose, and we'll call them up as they have signed up. So we're going to try this today. Be patient with us as we work through the technology. But it's trying to save a tree or two while making everything a little more efficiently. With that, it's time for the consent calendar. Would any councilmember like to pull an item from consent? Councilmember Soria?
I'd like to pull item 1B. And then you mentioned, was item 1K pulled or you just added?
It was just modified.
I would like to pull that item.
So 1B as in boy?
One, yes. B as in boy, 1K.
Okay. Councilmember Brettafield?
I believe Councilmember Soria's pulled the ones I was going to pull, so we're good.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparza?
He has liked to pull item 1E, as in a Sparza, and 1P as in Paul.
Great. And then I will pull item 1L, as in Larry, our former council member here. Any other items wishing to be pulled from consent? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Councilmember Capriolo, second by Councilmember Soria to approve the remainder of the consent item. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to any items on the consent that were not pulled? All right, let's try this new system. 1B was pulled. That's off. All right, we have nobody to speak on the items that, the remaining consent items. Do I hear any opposition to approving the consent calendar as amended? Seeing none, the consent calendar is approved. Now, we will take this one item at a time. Item 1B as in boy. Member Soria?
Yes, I'd like to get a presentation, please, or go through the item.
Chief, Donna, after you present, we'll go to public comment, and then we'll come back to the council for discussion.
Very good.
Thank you.
Counsel, today, I want to discuss the item that is in front of you. Lilis History, NBS is the company that conducted the study in 2011 that identified the costs for providing prevention, inspection, and other related services. However, the decision at the time was to charge only approximately 40 to 46% of the actual cost of that service. The agenda item in front of you that you are voting on is to charge the actual cost of providing the services, moving away from the general fund subsidizing for-profit businesses and the like at a reduced fee. The Fire Department's Budget Office, the city's Budget Office, worked together in projecting what the appropriate increases of the fully burdened cost would be at current MOU salaries benefit packages versus using the 2011 MOU salary and benefit packages data model. In November of 2019, we discussed and presented these fees to the BIA, where they asked us to bring in an outside agency to review our numbers for accuracy. We incurred that expense, and we invited NBS to review that data. They came back with a recommendation to increase those fees for the MOU and so forth charges to 17.25% to the fully burdened cost of the fee, or to follow CPI increases, which was during that same time period of 2011 to 2020, is 17.7%. The recommendation in front of you is to apply the 75% of 17.25, which is 12.94%, to the full cost of the fee, resulting in a fully burdened cost recovery of 96.32%. Other cities, our peer cities and Clovis, all have different fees. They all vary in how those fees are calculated and what fees they charge. So comparing apples to apples is a little challenging. All we can tell you is, this is the full cost providing city services, not what it charges in Alameda, or in Clovis, or in Sacramento. This is what our costs are. The net revenue projected is $2.2 million annually in new revenue. Our city has revenue challenges, and I think it's our job and responsibility is to turn over every rock as we look to possibly going out to the public and asking for another tax measure in some way, that we have done our due diligence to turn over every rock to see if there's revenue opportunities internally. This is a rock essentially that we have kicked down the road for nine years by not increasing the fees. The Fire Department has tremendous needs, both station maintenance, equipment, staffing, both civilian and sworn. However, the entire city's general fund has tremendous needs as well. And I know that the administration is working hard to, in this budget process coming up, to try and balance all of those needs going forward. If you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Have a question.
Can we go to the public first? So you should be able to see your names listed up there. Adam, Jennifer, Mike, Sheldon, and Oliver, please come up, and you'll have three minutes each. Gary said it works really well, so that means that we'll keep it forever. Come on up, Adam.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Adam Higgins. I used to run a fireworks stand for the Fresno State Bulldog Marching Band. One of the items that is proposed in this fee increase is the city license for running a fireworks stand. It is currently set at $6.26. The fee is proposed to be increased over $1,500. That's an increase of over 250% to your local nonprofits. These groups provide money to underage, or I'm sorry, disparaged youth, the elderly. These are all nonprofits. You cannot be pocketing the money to have a stand in the city. And the Fire Department now wants to raise these fees to over $1,500. These nonprofits are not going to be able to hold these stands. By the time they're done paying these fees to the city, they will have no profits left to put towards the causes that these nonprofits are out there for. I don't see how the city, how the Fire Department can do this to these nonprofits. Essentially, they're limiting the spaces of groups to do this. I just, to me, an increase of 250% just seems unreasonable, and there has to be a way between the city and the Fire Department to make this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Jennifer Schnell. I'm with TNT Fireworks. Yes, I'm a fireworks wholesaler. I am not a nonprofit organization. But I've been asked to represent nonprofit organizations that we partner with in this fundraising endeavor in your city so that they can give back to your community, those that couldn't be here today because they've had to work. I am a wholesaler. They buy their fireworks from me, but I am in a partnership with these nonprofits, such as the ones you recognize today. Jakara Movement puts into this lottery to have a fireworks stand, to be able to do the things that they represented today and spoke about today. This fee increase is not paid, this fee is not paid by a for-profit business like TNT Fireworks. And I wanted to clarify that misconception for you today so that you're informed in the vote that you're making on this increase. These nonprofit organizations pay that fee. We are a wholesaler. They buy their fireworks from us, period. They have other expenses to do this fundraiser as well. They have to provide liability insurance. Many of the retail spaces that allow them to put their stands charge them rent for that space. So their profit in the end is not 50% off of the fireworks they sell, like many people think, but it's more like 25 to 30% if the price is right. So I just want you to be well-informed. This fee of $6.26 is the second highest fee imposed by any other city in the Central Valley. And if it goes to the fee proposed before you, it will be the highest in California imposed by any other city. And I don't know that you can compare apples to apples, as Chief Donna said, but I think you should take the time to look at how other cities are managing this program for the costs that they have in place. And maybe there's some streamlining that can be done, or some, somewhere there's, you know, some efficiency that can be imposed. But thank you for making a more informed decision.
Thank you. Mike, you're up next. Hold your horses, Mike.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. Mike Brandini representing the Building Industry Association. I'm here today, had not intentionally initially expected to attend because we're not going, we were not going to actively oppose this increase. However, we do have concerns as to the process, and we understand that there was some confusion as to our position. We do not support, and we never will support, a fee increase. It's just a matter of the industry. We don't want to pay more. We accept it, and we will not actively oppose an increase that we think that the city may need. In this case, obviously, the fees are based on a study that was done seven, eight years ago. And we, from the beginning, when the Fire Department suggested this, that they were processing it, that they do a complete study similar to the kind of study that the Planning and Development Services did a few years ago. That analysis included not only the fee and the work and the time and the cost, but it also included a review of the processes to see if those processes were done effectively and efficiently in the most cost-effective manner. So as I said, we did not actively oppose it, but we have strongly suggested that a full study be prepared to look at their actual costs. The Fire Department chose to use an expedited process, and I can understand why they'd want to do that, to get these fees in place as soon as possible, because the fees have been so long at the level they are. So we do, if the council chooses to adopt this, we strongly urge you to require a full, independent review of costs and processes to determine that the fees are reasonable and are paying for the most efficient process possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandini. Thank you for your honesty. Sheldon?
Hi, I'm Sheldon Schlesinger, and we've been selling fireworks since the millennium when you reinstituted it. And for our situation, I have a new nonprofit, and our stand's kind of a small stand. And I was looking at the proposal, and the fee would be more than the profit. So I think what's going to happen is there are going to be a lot of smaller groups like ours, who have smaller stands, who are going to say, I'm not going to work seven 16-hour days in the heat if I'm not going to be able to make anything to help my group. So I don't know what the answer is, but the answer isn't to triple or quadruple the fee so that the nonprofits can't make any money. And there are lots of nonprofits. For us, this is the major fundraiser, and we run our whole nonprofit off of this one-week sale. But with this fee, it's not going to happen, and I think a lot of groups will just decide not to do it. And then you'll lose the money you're already getting off of the current fee. So it may not be a boost to the city, and it definitely won't help the nonprofits, which definitely need help.
Thank you. What nonprofit are you with?
My new nonprofit is called Central California Music Travelers. Before, when I was teaching, we had Central California Youth Symphony. And I also worked at several Fresno Unified Schools and their music boosters had nonprofits and I worked stands for them and have been doing this for a long time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Oliver, you're up next.
Good morning. My name is Oliver German. I'm the head women's soccer coach for Fresno City College. I've been there for nineteen years now. And I've had the privilege to work with TNT Fireworks for close to twelve years selling fireworks and it's been very helpful for our program to help purchase equipment and help our travel fees because our school does not provide us with a big budget. And selling fireworks is not the easiest thing to do, but it's been a great steady fundraiser for us to be able to manage our program over the years. And having this fee is really going to affect our student athletes as far as equipment and travel expenses. Obviously, as a coach, fundraising is one of our biggest challenges and selling fireworks has been very helpful for us and helpful enough that that's why I'm here today. And obviously, this is a concern for a program like us that spends about five, six days every year in that hot sun trying to survive to raise enough money for our program. So we definitely oppose this fee and hope that we're not, you know, having to pay for this out of our fundraising money. So, thank you.
Congratulations, by the way, on the successes of your program year after year at Fresno City. I'm a graduate of Fresno City and actually I've donated to the soccer team through our Hawaiian common friend. He's such a good guy.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address accounts on this item that has not signed in or haven't called? Seeing now, we'll bring it back to a dice. Seeing now, Councilmember Soria and then Councilmember Butterfield.
Thank you. Just wanted to ask, what was the cost of the second study that we just did or the second study that provides the...
Oh, the recent one?
Yeah.
It was a little less than ten thousand.
And on the, I'm just kind of curious on the comments that were made because I do believe there's some valid concerns in terms of the increase. Before I ask a question, I just wanted to, I know TNT is in the room and I get it that you're supportive of these nonprofits selling your product, but have you thought about maybe absorbing a little bit of the cost and helping these nonprofits? I think that that's also the part of doing business. I know that the cost is extreme, the increase is extreme. Is there anything that you guys have thought about to be able to address the concern? Is there some efficiency in the permit process or the inspection process that could mitigate some of the increase? We know that, obviously, we haven't done an increase in two thousand eleven, since two thousand eleven, but we have to recognize that as a city, we can't continue to kick the can down the road. I think that that was a line that has been utilized by my council colleague Capriolio. On a number of the tough votes that we have to take, none of us like to, you know, raise people's taxes or raise people's fees, but it is the cost of doing business. But have we in particular looked at these, at this issue? I'm assuming it's not thousands of booths, it's only a few, maybe a few hundred? I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's, every year we have sixty booths available. The fee, back in two thousand eleven when it was assessed and NBS did the time task study, the fee at that time was supposed to be thirteen sixty-nine. And we have not charged that for all of these years. It has in some new fee we just came up with, there was, there's logic and math and science behind how this fee came about. Every year, we have a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty applicants to be in our lottery. That's been consistent over the last, I don't know how many years since we've had fireworks ordinances. So my guess is we're going to still have a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty applicants regardless of the fee. I'm empathetic with nonprofits. We have our own nonprofit in the Fire Chiefs Foundation. I understand that. But to give a pass to, it is a for-profit company that happens to work with nonprofits as their recipient. I don't know how we give a pass to them, but not to the business owner or the builder. This is why some cities are also stepping out of the arena of safe and sane fireworks because of the cost associated with safe and sane and policing and oversight and review. So, you know, it's kind of, I can't, you can't have your cake and eat it too. This is what the cost is. I didn't make it up. It's just based on, you know, the math and the science.
And does, the fact that we have those fireworks, are you guys having to address more calls as a result of these fireworks that are being sold in our city?
Fireworks every year, safe and sane or illegal, does result in more call volume, period.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And I know that, as I mentioned, obviously, I'm sensitive to the issues that are being brought up by the nonprofits. I would encourage the nonprofits to put a little pressure onto TNT. They're here. They want to make money too, so, but it is the price of doing business and we have to be very mindful. I, I know that it's a tough call to raise fees and, but we haven't done it since two thousand eleven. And I don't think it's, you know, unreasonable for us to look at a study that provides us the information as to, you know, what is the cost of the fire department doing their job when new housing developments are being built or new businesses are being opened in our community. There's been a lot of talk about having a public safety tax, parks tax and so forth. But I think that first, we have to get our house in order and figure out, you know, the revenue streams that we are foregoing, the subsidization that is happening before we can go ask the entire public to pay more for the services that they're maintaining. So I know that it is a tough, a tough call, but I do want to encourage my council colleagues to not continue to kick the can down the road because two years from now or five years from now, those fees are probably going to double and it's going to be much more of a sticker shock for folks. So with that, I will listen to the other comments made by my colleagues. But one thing I did want to, I guess one last thing that I did want to mention, that if we do approve, and I would make a motion to approve the recommendation of the chief and the administration, that we make sure that these funds, I know that it's a general fund, or the fire's a general fund department, but that these funds do stay within the fire department to address those needs. And in addition to it, I'd also like, we've been talking about this for a number of months and there is a desire to increase minimum staffing. I would like to ask the administration to look at really applying for a safer grant. We know that we need to build the capacity of our, our fire department so that we can increase our minimum daily staffing and essentially decrease the response times that we have in getting to these different incidents that are happening. So that would be my motion today.
I will second that motion. Councilmember Butterfield, you're up next.
Yes, Chief, the, the information you're generating these fees from, that was done when? When was that analysis done?
Two thousand eleven was the original time task NBS study.
Right.
And then we applied the city budget, offices applied the new MOUs, benefit salary packages, current date. And then we had that information audited, if you will, or reviewed by NBS for accuracy.
And that, that review just took place?
Yes, it did.
But that's based on a nine-year-old study?
True. And that question came up when we originally discussed this with the BIA. And essentially, our, our tasks on inspections and what have you, those, those systems and practices really haven't changed. We, we still go out and have to inspect a square footage a certain way and that, that time on task really hasn't changed, which is why we didn't recommend at this time to move forward with that study. However, we have put in this, I think, staff report that it would be our recommendation within the next year or two that we do a complete time task study audit or assessment.
Now, there's two types of studies, if I understand. There's a NEXA study making the connection to charge the fee, but there's also something called a time and motion study, correct? Where you look at all of the tasks that fire department or any department is doing, seeing how efficient they are, where there can be improvements, what can be maybe something you're doing now and maybe do it differently so you save money. That wasn't part of the study, the time and motion, was it?
That was not part of this most recent one. It was in two thousand eleven, which is where these fees, the original fees came from.
But would, wouldn't it make sense for us to, I mean, these fees, a large number of these fees, and I've shared this way, I mean, they're doubled, they're tripled, they're quadrupled. I mean, there's a lot of sticker shock to these fees. I know they haven't been incrementally increased whereas perhaps they should be, but there's, there's a lot of sticker shock with looking at these fees, some new fees, some fees you've, as you've expressed to me, have kind of changed the names, but, and I understand that. But wouldn't it make sense before this council makes the decision to increase these kinds of fees that we do an up-to-date time and motion study, an up-to-date NEXA study where we really do this analysis and also do it a comparative analysis? I know you can't do apples to apples across cities, across communities. I would feel much more comfortable supporting something after that analysis is done as opposed to using what I think is really an outdated study. It's obviously nine years ago, coming up with triple and quadruple fees and saying, you know, this is what we should move forward with. I mean, wouldn't it make sense to do something more up-to-date?
Councilmember, I put thought to that and I've looked at this and if I really believe that our motion or our actions or the way our task is done is different today significantly from two thousand eleven, I would say yes, but it isn't. And so that's why we've taken this approach to say, and also if we would have just increased the fees ten, twenty percent each year, we wouldn't be having this sticker shock. We've just haven't done it in so long and so we're realizing that, you know, it's time that we stop subsidizing and the general fund propping up, you know, for-profit companies. I think it's something we should definitely shoot to do as any prudent department or organization should, but looking at this, our task hasn't, hasn't changed much.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm a big supporter of our fire department, our law enforcement, always will be, always have been. But I'm, I'm, I'm still, I'm trying to get past this hurdle of looking at triple and quadruple fees. I mean, hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars. I can't get past this, the booths going from, you know, six hundred to fifteen hundred something. I understand that, but I think we should be supporting the nonprofits and not doing this, really it's a three-hundred percent increase. I can't support that. If this council's going to move forward with that today, I'm not going to support that. I think that's not a good message to send. Secondly, these fees, which would generate about two million dollars into the general fund, as I read the staff report, goes into the general fund. And so what's going to happen is you have a need, you're saying we should be charging these fees for fire department. The fact is, you'll never see it because these will get into the general fund, they will go to other things. And as we saw in the carryover, there's millions of dollars that gets wasted from million-dollar housing funds to interns to census to all kinds of things that I think, my opinion, I know people disagree, that are total waste of money.
Councilmember Butterfield, my motion included making sure that those fees were, stayed within the department.
I understand, I understand that part of it. I mean, you're still approving all these fees and I agree with that part of it because any fees that are increased for the fire department should stay with the fire department. And what, the scam is, if it's not going to go to the fire department, we're just raising people's fees, there's taxes going on, and you're still going to be having the same problems because you're not getting the money that you're charging fees for doesn't go into your department, it goes elsewhere. And so that's the scam and that, if that passes, it should just go to your department. That's the way it ought to be, just as it is with some of the other enterprise departments. So I have a problem with that as well. I would ask the council to delay this. Let's pay for a time and motion study. Let's pay for the NEXA study. That will come up with efficiencies. I know a lot of the services have not changed as Chief Donna says, but I'm sure there are things that we could do better that might reduce some fees. And for me, I would be much more comfortable looking at, at that and possibly approving that if we did something that's more up-to-date. But I, I can't in good conscience support tripling and quadrupling fees on, based on a study that's nine years old. I also can't support, you know, tripling the nonprofits, those booths. I know how important that money is to a lot of folks. And going from five or six hundred to almost sixteen hundred is not something that, that I can support. And I, you know, just can't support putting these two million dollars into a general fund that doesn't really benefit the fire department. So if the council's willing to hold off, get that study, I'm willing to support that. If the council insists on moving forward with this, I can't support those fees.
Thank you, Councilmember Butterfield. City manager would like to comment?
Yeah, I appreciate that. So I, I would strongly recommend that council approve staff's recommendation today with the caveat that we come back with a more comprehensive study within, you know, the calendar year. I think we could do it at some point this year for sure. We definitely need the revenue. You all know, I, I know you've heard that we need a safer grant, PD is interested in a COPS grant. There are needs that I could sit here all day and tell you in every single department. I would also recommend that you not pigeonhole me to include, to keep the revenue in the fire department. That's not how the general fund works. I can tell you right now that the planning revenues that come in for entitlements that are processed and planning help offset fire needs and PD needs and parks needs. And so doing that is really problematic, but I promise you, just like we do every year, that when we look at departments in the budget, we will look at all of their needs and do our best to stretch our revenues to accommodate those. So again, we will present all of those to you with the budget, but that's my recommendation today.
Thank you, city manager. Member Esparsa, then Member Kervasi. Member Esparsa then, and then Member Chavez.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chief, for bringing this forward. I do have to agree, looking at these numbers, that, I mean, this is the cost of doing business. I mean, with respect to the nonprofit issue in particular, just kind of give the, I guess the economist perspective, if this is the cost of doing business altogether, it's not just the sellers who are responsible for putting these fireworks out. It's also, you know, on, on the community as well for buying them and using them. And there's a significant cost associated with, with that activity, thus allowing that activity here in the city of Fresno. And so, you know, I, I do support the proposed fee schedule that you brought forward. I would hope, or I would think, just from, sort of from my perspective, that the prices for fireworks are going to go up all across the board, not just for private folks, not just for nonprofits. But my only concern would be that, that it's a level playing field for everyone, right? That all the prices are going up. And that's just reflective of, again, the true cost of doing that type of business here. With respect to the, keeping the fees in the fire department, I would support that motion. If we don't do that, then it pretty much just turns from fees into taxes. That, that is the primary difference. A fee is assessed to provide a particular service and mitigate a particular cost versus money that's collected, it goes to the general funds and we politically appear to decide how to use that. That's the difference between fees and taxes. And so I would support keeping this, in the spirit of calling it a fee, keeping it in the fire department as well. I'm open to a study afterward, but I mean, with respect to my colleague's suggestion that we put this off, I don't think a new study is going to tell us that the price of doing business is going to go down. I think if anything, it will marginally increase would be my, my very educated guess. And so I'm not sure exactly what that suggestion was, but I think there was an implication there that you were not using your... was, but I think there was an implication there that you were not using your current resources effectively. And I don't believe that. After speaking to you and seeing the incredible work that you do with a very limited staffing and resources that we've given the department, I think you are probably stretching things pretty thin already to serve the entire city. So with that, I will support the motion, and that's the end of my comments.
Councilmember Chavez, you have the floor.
Hey, chief. Thank you for that presentation and meeting with me. So how long ago did we do that study you referenced?
2011.
And these fees that you're bringing forward are from 2011?
Yes. The study identified the fees at that time. And my example was for, let's say fireworks, the fee was supposed to be $1,362 in 2011. So it's not just automatically, you know, tripled.
But that was 2011, right?
Correct.
So nine years ago. So fair to say that if we did a study, a new one, the fees would probably be higher to reflect the cost of doing business today?
I'm going to assume it would trend that way.
Right. And I think that's the challenge that we're all trying to work through, where nobody likes fees, right? Nobody likes to pay, nobody likes to pay more. Let's just be honest and frank about it. But the challenge also is, and every single year, we go through this conversation around 4th of July. How many calls do you get for service out there for fireworks that start fires across the city?
Well, it's significant, so much so that we staff up extra engines that day to manage the call volume.
And so that's the challenge that I have, that, I mean, I can't tell you how many calls my office gets for fireworks that are, you know, setting off, you know, fires, whether it's brushed by the highways or in our neighborhoods or homes that burned down. And so at some point, we have to actually recover the cost. Now, just a quick overview, the study that you conducted reflects every single cost associated with this? Is that the formula? Just kind of give us a quick overview of the formula, so to speak.
From the 2011?
Yes.
Yeah, that is a time task study. So we have, let's say, an inspection of this building. There's time associated for an inspector to go through and make sure they identify all of the fire safety hazards. Then they have to document those. There's staff time associated with that. There's desk time, drive time, yeah, thank you. And any other person that might be involved beyond an inspector. Is there a higher-level DC or BC or administrative support person, their time associated with it? All those were compiled into what the fee would be, and then they applied the last MOU salary benefit packages to that fee.
So for the last
And then there's a time for it.
So for the last nine years, the cost of you doing those inspections has not been able to pay for themselves, correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Member Capriolio?
Thank you. Chief, I had a couple of questions. I think my colleagues are a little bit confused in the sense of, we were discussing fireworks stands earlier as opposed to fireworks, fires, and illegal, legal, and all that. So for me, the fireworks stand is separate and apart from that discussion. And I'm just going to throw out a proposal. On the nonprofits, I think it would be fair to increase that fee 10% per year and limit it to that amount as it proceeds accordingly. Less impact, they can continue to do their good work in the community. I'm just throwing this out for my colleagues to consider it. But I think that would be more fair, and especially since this is a viable source for nonprofits. I'm active in nonprofits, and every dollar counts. So earlier comments were made about fees. No one likes fees, so then the question is, how reasonable is the fee? We have to create a reasonable fee for these services. And so my concern was, in my business, I have to cut my overhead if I want to increase my double bottom line. And so I do that various ways. And I was thinking with the inspections, is it possible to take the pickups, the trucks, pickup trucks, and have people from those, the fire inspectors that we've budgeted, go to these various places and look rather than ladder truck, a big truck?
Yeah, we moved away from the majority of fire inspections being in the field to having them being conducted by a fire inspector already in a small, fuel-efficient vehicle.
And how many fire inspectors do we have?
We have 12.
13 inspectors.
And then how many?
Three seniors.
13 inspectors, three seniors, and two supervisors.
And do we know what the budget number is for them?
I don't, off the top of my head. But, you know, I'll frame it in this way. We do all of the mandatory state inspections, you know, with vigilance. We also have other higher prior, higher life safety inspections we conduct. But there is a vast majority of businesses that we haven't even gotten in to inspect in the last four or five years just because of a staffing capacity. So there's improvements in need. We can't just move more resources around at this time to maybe do more inspections than what we are currently providing.
I'm just concerned that it might be, let's say it's a million dollars for the inspections, and the money generated from this process we're talking about could be several million dollars. So I'm going back to reasonableness of fees. The fee for the inspection versus general fund dollars going to the fire department, which is another issue in my mind. So with that, my next comment is, if the fees go directly to the fire department, then I think it's reasonable for the general fund dollars to back out of the fire department budget because these fees are going directly in. Otherwise, we're doubling down on that, and then the police are going to want that. And parks, of course, we don't have enough money for our parks and our recreational centers, et cetera. So you have to rebalance this. I don't know quite how we're going to do that, but I think if some money goes in, some money should come out because those are general fund dollars and they are utilized throughout our community.
You know, I want to point, I want to point out, and I don't have Henry or Jane here, and I'm trying to find out, but I know that the fires' budget already exceeds the revenue that they generate, including this additional revenue that comes in. Their personnel costs alone are, grow by about, I don't have that number handy, and I don't want to be on the record quoting something that's inaccurate, but if you are going to say that the revenue stays in this department and general fund money needs to come out, that, we need to table this item and have a greater discussion.
Thank you, city manager.
I think those are my comments. I have many more, quite frankly, but I'll save those for another day. But again, I think it goes back to reasonableness and balancing and being fair across the board to all departments in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, council vice president. Councilmember Carvazi, you have the floor.
No questions, chief, but thank you. I just wanted to say, Councilmember Soria is right about this having gone from 2011, not wanting to kick the can down the road. And at some point, we have a responsibility to make a good decision, a financially sound decision for the city. You know, we have people from the BIA here, building community, we have people from the fireworks stands, but there are a lot of people that aren't here today because I bet they don't know this is happening. Small business, mom-and-pop shops, who have no idea their fees are going to increase almost more than double. It would have been nice if we'd been doing it a little bit every year over time so that we wouldn't be burdening people so much. But we are where we are. I think a few things have been said in the discussion that I'm a little bit concerned about regarding, you know, keeping the funds just within the department. I actually like that idea, but I want to know, I admit, I'm pretty new. I want to know the true implications of that because I am very concerned. I mentioned the safer grant in one of my first meetings. I still want to push that item because we need to increase minimum staffing. Everyone knows I'm a big fan of PD. I appreciate everything they do. But the other half of the equation is fire. And I want, I make it very clear, I want more minimum staffing. So I'm going to agree with the city manager. I really think maybe we should table this item. I don't know if I'll have support on here, but I want to make a motion to table the item so we can have more discussion on it.
I'll second that.
All right. Well, before we get to those motions, I have a couple of questions. There's nobody else who's punched up. Fire chief, can you walk us through, what's your staffing ratio compared to other cities?
Our minimum daily staffing is 80 compared to other peer cities. We're pretty low. We're at .5, I want to say .53, maybe a little bit less per thousand.
What's the recommended ratio?
The national standard is one to one and a half. The goal in the general plan is .81 per thousand.
So we're significantly below the national standard for file coverage, and we're far below our general plan standard?
Correct.
All right. The legal counsel, is there a reason why we can't impose a fee on the wholesaler of this product if a NEXA study determines that there's a cost to providing a service for their products?
Well, there would need to be a fee study, and then our service actually provided directly to the wholesaler to charge a fee to the wholesaler directly.
Okay.
So there would need to be a study and determination of that.
Thank you. Just from my perspective, council colleagues, you know, the understaffing of the fire department is clear. We had a significant tragedy a few years ago. The department opened up its closet and, you know, completely made some significant improvements to ensure that doesn't happen again. The one astounding issue has always been, they're significantly underfunded. Police has historically taken the lion's share of the general fund. The, we know clearly that nobody wants to pay more fees. I appreciate the honesty of the BIA. Nobody supports more fees, but everybody's willing to accept them because they know the cost of service has gone up. In our city, we have some of the lowest family incomes and household incomes in the state of California and in the nation. And there's been a lot of talk about having us as a council consider the highest sales tax increase in a city's history to pay for police, fire, and other services. And my position has been very clear, before we go to residents who we know are on fixed incomes and whose salaries and incomes have not grown, and we know that there is a record amount of fires, not only because of the old structures that we have in the city and the slum lords in our city, but also because of the homeless encampments, we have a fiduciary duty to ensure that we address those concerns and those hazards. And a study was done in '11. That council decided to kick the can down the road. Now it's on us to address it, and the price is only going to get higher. I recognize the impact to nonprofits, but selling fireworks does have a public impact to the safety of our city. And everybody is going to have to absorb some of that cost. And if the wholesaler is interested in continuing to do business in the city, I think they have a fiduciary duty to also absorb some of that cost if they're really in partnership with our nonprofits. Businesses will have to absorb some of that cost, new construction, existing businesses, the general fund, the council. We all have to pay our fair share before we ask taxpayers to impose the highest sales tax increase in our city's history to pay for what we know is underfunded, which includes fire. So with that, I'd rather we take action, adjust the fees now, so that when we get to that conversation of a sales tax increase, we can tell the public that we've already done as much as we can with the existing businesses, new development, existing providers and recipients of services. Because taxes should be a last resort. Fees are a fee for service. If you don't use a service, you don't pay the fee. Fee is optional. But taxes, before we impose them, should be the last resort. So with that, I'm going to support the motion to make the adjustments to the fees based on the 2011 study. And I will also support the motion that it remains in the fire department. Because if we're saying that we're increasing fees to provide better service, then we have to be able to provide better service for that additional fee. With that, is, there's a motion to table the item. There's a motion to second it. We will take that motion first. All right. Motion has been made, second to table the item. Any of those in favor? One, two, three, four? Four. The item is tabled for the next meeting.
So when is it coming next week? I mean, next council meeting?
You want to specify?
Well, it depends on the work that's done in the interim and whether or not we have valid facts and information to continue our discussion and our decision-making process. So I don't know when this
We will attempt, we will attempt to work with staff and then meet with a few of you between now and the next meeting. But, you know, I would say the next meeting or two, we'll bring the item back.
And I'd like some representatives from Local 753, just to represent the firefighters. Oh, are they here? I'd like you guys to be included in that discussion.
All right. We are kicking the can down the road for a couple of meetings.
Taking the can.
At least, yes. That's what some people prefer. Item 1K, Councilmember Soria. Thank you, Fire Chief. We'll go to item 1E, as in Edward. I believe that's Councilmember Sparza.
Yes, I had a couple of questions for staff. Just looking at the list here in terms of the signal installations, the phasing modifications. I see that my district, District 7, only has, I think, three projects here on the list. And there are other districts who had five to six times as many, double or triple as many. Can you walk us through the process of, again, the order and prioritization?
Sure. Good morning. Jill Gormley. I'm the city traffic engineer. And when we compile these lists, we look at requests that we get from citizens, requests that we get from council, requests that staff have made or have seen in the field. And it's a running list that's been going on since about 2005, 2006. Every signal that is on the list stays on the list until they are fully constructed. If you have signals that you think might meet the warrants for being included on these lists, we can analyze those and see if they are indeed meeting the warrants and warrant, being on the lists. Otherwise, you know, we rely on input that we get from the community and from council.
Okay, yeah. So speaking of input from the community, I'm not sure where this ranks, but Clinton and Millbrook, left turn signal, turning from Clinton onto Millbrook, if you're going eastbound on Clinton, and then taking a left turn north onto Millbrook. I'd like for staff to take a look at that. That's an area where we're getting constant complaints and constant rate of accidents and such. And I'm not sure if, off the top of your head, you would know where that might be placed.
I don't know, off the top of my head, but we can look at it and get back to you on that.
Perfect. I'll make a motion to approve. Motion made by Councilmember Sparza, seconded by Councilmember Carvazi. Do we have anybody from public question to speak to this item? Seeing none, is there opposition to this item?
I'm punched out.
Councilmember Brettafield, you have the floor.
Okay, so I'm a little confused. Council president, is Lot 2 part of this? I heard that
We're not discussing that item. We're discussing 1E as in Edward.
Oh, 1E, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought we were talking about 1K.
Okay. Is there any opposition to item 1E as in Edward? Seeing none, it's approved. All right. Next item is 1P as in Paul.
He has some questions for staff and I have the 1P. So my, I mean, my understanding of the item is that we're giving these residents, these seven parcels, 15 years instead of three years to connect. I assume that's because of the burdensome cost that's being imposed on the residents. Is that correct?
It's also due to, and a little background, council did approve an annexation near the corner of Clinton and Temperance Avenue a couple of meetings ago. It has not yet been heard by the LAFCO Formation Committee. We have seven residents that are opposed to the annexation. One of their primary arguments in opposition is the high cost of connecting to city sewer. Our current ordinance does require that they connect within three years once they're annexed to the city. So this is an effort to provide them with additional time and reduce their costs upon annexation to the city.
This is annexation. You said you have seven residents opposed. That's all, that's the total number of parcels within this annexation, right?
Well, the one larger parcel that is proposed for development, there's no opposition there. So yes, there's, all of the opposition is from existing homes.
Okay. And this was related to, I think, a vote we took in late last year, the rezoning of that area was previously zoned for park, for the Lennar project, the Lennar project, correct?
It wasn't a rezone, but it was a, we, council did take action to zone it as a residential property.
Okay. So do you have an idea, I mean, off the top of your head, I mean, what kind of cost are these residents facing? That, I mean, that we have to give them 15 years?
One of the concerns that the residents have said is that they would be required to remove their septic tank, fill that tank, and then provide a connection out to the street. These homes sit towards the back of These homes sit towards the back of two, two acre parcels or even larger parcels, so there's quite a, a long distance from the street to the home. They may require a pump to be able to lift the sewer water up and, and get into the pipes. We don't know until they, or actually that work is designed. You know, the actual connection, the city's fee, I think, is only $3,000 or $4,000. That's not the main cost. The main cost is them hiring a plumber, removing that septic tank, installing that new pipe out to the street.
Well, $3,000 or $4,000 is nothing to blink at in itself, plus all, and then, in addition to the actual physical costs, of which we do not have an idea at this point.
Well, it'll be different on every home, but it's, you know, most homes, it's going to be over $10,000, could be probably as high as $20,000. It's kind of a ballpark. If they were smaller properties, the cost wouldn't be as high.
I see, I see. Well, those are some pretty wild costs for any resident of Fresno, I, I think. Okay, is there a reason, I mean, in, in terms of, you know, council took action, right, because the application was submitted by Lennar to undertake this project? I mean, it, it sounds like what we have here is just another cost of development that not being covered by developer. Do you agree with that?
You know, it's not typical for a developer to make improvements on private property.
But we're coercing these, these residents into, I mean, we're forcing them to, to pay this money to connect to us, when none of them wanted it. And I don't think even the city residents around that area wanted it.
The previous development in that area by Century Homes did install the sewer line. Sewer line is in place in front of all of these homes. And, and there are laterals at the right-of-way line for the homes.
Of which it costs $3,000 to $4,000 to connect to in addition to all the other physical costs.
And that, that helps to pay for the city services for the connection.
Sure, sure. No, absolutely. I mean, the costs have to be covered. We are where we are. So I don't think I'm going to support this today, not because I don't support giving the residents an extension. I think if we're imposing these massive costs on them, they should have this time. I just think that the cost of this kind of business was misplaced in, in this particular instance. And these are, I, I can understand, you know, these folks, if I were one of them, I'd be pretty pissed as well about, you know, having to pay $15,000 because of someone who wanted to sprawl out and build more homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparza. Councilmember Capriolo?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this item.
Motion's been made, it been seconded. Any other questions from the council? I have some questions, staff, can you come forward? So, please let me know if, if I have this description correct. When we approved this spraw development in that area by Lennar Homes, we also annexed all these parcels into the city sphere.
Ultimately, the final vote is by the Local Agency of Formation Commission, but the council did recommend including these seven homes in the annexation.
So we took action to recommend annexing all these parcels, and I, if I recall the conversation, it was to avoid future county islands that have been problematic in the spraw of our city and providing services, road improvements, correct?
That is correct. We're also concerned about a safe route to school for the residents that live in the homes. It's a fairly large subdivision, over 350 homes. Boris Elementary is located on the southeast corner of Clinton and Temperance. And so annexing these additional homes would allow us the ability to widen Temperance and install sidewalks between the new development and the school.
And walk me through why it is that, what's our standard time that we allow new property and owners to annex into the city to connect to our sewer and water, and why do we require that connection?
Our, our code requires three years for them to annex, and we require that for various reasons. There's always concerns about contamination from septic tanks. There's also just the overall cost of bypassing that property with water line, a sewer line. We don't have a mandatory water connection requirement, although we do not allow new wells to be drilled. So eventually, most of the homes do connect to our water also.
So essentially, once their water runs out or they have to go deeper, at that point they're required to connect to our water system.
That is correct. This, what we're proposing today also states that even though they would have 15 years to connect to the sewer, they couldn't add another property or another home on their site or make other changes on their site without connecting.
If, if their septic tanks contaminate our groundwater, because I'm assuming we're also building new water wells to serve these subdivisions, if their groundwater contaminates their sewage system, contaminates our groundwater, who is liable for that?
Well, each homeowner is liable for any contamination they create. Every septic tank creates, it increases the nitrate level in the, in the groundwater, but these are larger parcels, they're all over two acres. The amount of contamination, I don't know, when you look at all of the septic tanks, it's, it's minute, but it's still better to get rid of them in the long run. That's why we, we are still requiring a connection over time.
And we're simply making a recommendation, if LAFCO was to reject this recommendation, what happens then?
We'll have a county island, most likely. It depends on the action taken by LAFCO. If they do allow the annexation of the developing property that Lennar's proposing, then we'll have a county island.
So we would intentionally be creating a county island and have to address whatever implications that brings forward, because LAFCO is the final decision-making body, right?
And if that case, they would have no requirement to connect to water and sewer ever.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just from, from my perspective, council, yes, Councilmember Soria?
Do we know where LAFCO is on this? Do they generally approve these type of exceptions, or what is their standard there to?
You know, LAFCO is primarily a political body, so I haven't spoken with the politicians, but the staff at LAFCO is really opposed to any county islands. They also have support from different agencies, the Sheriff's Department for one, Fire Department. They all do not support the county islands. It's just really hard to provide service with little islands of seven homes surrounded by city residents.
So we may be in a predicament, because the reason that we annexed these properties was so that we can create the safe route to school. However, LAFCO will not recommend this type of exception, so therefore, we're going to be at square zero and no safe routes to school.
The LAFCO staff will not recommend that we create a county island. However, the, the staff doesn't make the final decision. It's made by the board members at LAFCO.
I get that, but if we don't follow the, if, if the elected members that are part of LAFCO don't accept our recommendation and do accept the staff's recommendation, it would defeat the purpose of why we were attempting to annex these folks in. Is that, am I reading this wrong, or am I not understanding this correctly?
I'm not completely sure I understand. The staff recommendation and the council recommendation, the LAFCO staff recommendation and the Fresno City Council recommendation are all consistent, that we do not create the island and that we annex all of the properties.
So, but if we create the 15-year exception, the LAFCO staff is not recommending that, correct?
No, they're, they're in support of the 15-year extension.
They are?
They are. They, they believe that it's a tool that we may be able to persuade at least some of those landowners to support the annexation. They're currently, all seven are opposed.
Okay, and so the safe route to school would happen if it's annexed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Just from, from my perspective, as Councilmember to District 3, I'm surrounded by a lot of county islands that were created in this kind of format, where we said we're going to allow this big subdivision and we're not going to require the adjacent property owners to annex into the city. We're not going to require them to connect to water and sewer. We're not going to require, you know, the builder to build out the roads. And 20 years later, we still are paying 10 times more to fix Clinton, Ashland, Shields, McKinley on the way to these huge subdivisions. And it has made extremely difficult for developers to compile enough properties to master plan communities the way they should be. Because there's a series of two, three, four acre parcels all over the place. I'm not comfortable with the 15-year, because I suspect that whenever we deal with annexations on the west area of 99, people are going to look to us and say, we also want the 15-year. We don't want to have to connect after three years. And in the world that we're in, where we're having to be responsible and liable for groundwater contamination, I don't want to be in a position where we intentionally expose the groundwater quality to more contamination to, to accommodate seven property owners, you know, in exchange for the hundreds of thousands of people who are going to be living in that area. So at this point, I can't be supportive, so I'll abstain from the conversation. Councilmember Capriolo?
Correct. I think we're, I'm making a mountain out of a molehill. There are seven people that have lived in the country forever, and they're asking for an exemption from three up to 15 years. So it's not precedent-setting, it's unique to this area. Each area in Fresno, whether it's west of 99, east of 99, or wherever, are unique and individual. So they will each have to come forward with their proposal, whether it's three months, three years, or whatever. So I, I don't see that this is an earth-shaking moment for the city of Fresno, we're going to change the tides of development. Secondarily, I think the homeowners should, if they don't realize, each year that passes, it's more expensive to do the connection. So economically, it would be wiser, in my view, to hook up sooner than later, once you have that financing. And the $3,000, $4,000 is not the issue, it's the unintended consequences of the connection that Mr. Benelli so articulately stated. So there's much more to the situation. So a west of 99 might not have that type of septic system or whatever, or north, south, east, or west, that's all unique. So this is, it's an ordinance that we're enacting citywide. It's unique to this area with these folks in this situation. So I urge you to support this motion.
Well, since Councilmember Capriolo urged me, I'm going to accommodate his request. Any opposition to this item? All right, we have one registration, no. Councilmember Capriolo, you convinced me, so you have a six, one approve on this item.
It was a task.
That's all it took. Yeah, just a, a discourse on facts, sufficient. All right. 1E, as in Edward. I'm sorry, 1K. Councilmember Soria?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, again, in terms of declaring some of the outlined properties. I think one of my colleagues added Lot 2 to this, and that could be a separate conversation. But I, I was concerned, and I think I brought that up two meetings ago, when I initially saw this item on the agenda, which is what we tabled, and then you guys came to do the, the presentation last week. So I'm concerned predominantly with Pride Park parcel. And I know that it's not a 10-acre park, or it's not a five-acre park, but that it is a piece of land in southwest Fresno, which I know is not my district, but I am concerned that, one, this park is named as part of the Parks Master Plan. And one of the biggest issues has been that in South Fresno, we've complained about the lack of park space. And, and I just, I want to figure out, are you guys going to be, if this parcel does get sold, are you guys figuring, figuring out a way to mitigate it? To add the space somewhere else? How does it, how is it connected with the Parks Master Plan in terms of the surplus property, surplus property policy? Is it allowable because it's called down in the Parks Master Plan? I think I had to ask this of the attorney last time, I don't know if we, did you guys-
I can address some of those questions, Councilmember. So a quick update for everyone. Pride Park, I don't think should ever have been called a park, because it's a piece of grass on a corner law that has a bench and no restrooms and no amenities, because it's not big enough. The history behind this parcel is that when the RDA was disposing of all these extra parcels across the city, they disposed of this one to the Public Works, planted some grass, put some benches. It's adjacent and right next to one of the biggest headstarts in the city of Fresno, Franklin Head Start. That parcel where Franklin is was owned by the RDA Successor Agency. They disposed of it to the EOC organization that runs the Head Start on-site. Historically, that parcel was planned to be divided in half for a road to be built in the middle of the parcel. Given those plans, EOC was never able to fully invest in upgrading and maintaining the Head Start, because it was going to be, have to be torn down at some point. The updated general plan that was approved in 2014 got rid of the need for that future road. So now the parcel is whole. At the same time, we looked at this parcel, we've gotten a lot of requests from community leaders, the school board president, Keisha Thomas, representing the Edison region, County Board of Education folks, community leaders who can't be here today, to do something with this parcel that has no real function as a park. So our proposal is to declare officially surplus property and allow the process to begin. It will include community meetings at Head Start, community meetings at the park, for us to discuss what are the options. Under the Surplus Act, we must first make it available to public agencies, prioritizing housing. The parcel is so small that you can't really build anything on it, much less housing, so it's just really an excess space. We did begin plans, we are building a nine-acre park in West Fresno as part of the TCC project. We recently upgraded the nine-acre parcel to a 10-acre parcel for the park. Our goal is to try and add more green space into West Fresno. But this park, like Hyde Park, should have never been declared a park, because Hyde Park is a landfill, and Pride Park is a piece of grass in the corner law in the busy intersection, which on paper gives people the feeling that there's green space, but actually there isn't. So our goal is to begin the process today, to declare to the community that we intend to have a different use for this parcel, have community meetings, and then at that point, make a recommendation to the council. It's a very lengthy process. We've had three meetings already with community leaders to discuss the options and the, and the proposal. There was talk at some point to make improvements to that park, but the size and scope is not something that Parks Department recommends. It also has a retaining wall that divides the parcel to Head Start. The retaining wall has been crumbling for the last few years, so it will require some improvements if we were to maintain it as is, given that it's in deteriorating condition. I fully understand your concerns about not getting rid of any green space, given that we have limited green space. But our hope is to add more green space in West Fresno with the new TCC grant, and actually make this a functional parcel for that Head Start can master plan the area, now that there's no road being planned, and they can actually convert it to some green space and playground for the Head Start kids are there. That's where we're at so far, so I'll be happy to report.
I just really quick, would like to also add that the master plan, the Parks Master Plan, does indicate that this is a property that we should dispense of.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So the Parks Master Plan does also call for this parcel?
Where, where does it call for it?
Page 94 of the Parks Master Plan explains that we grandfathered in this pocket park and that the city should consider, consider disposing of it due to the size of it and the potential attraction of bad behavior, homelessness, et cetera.
So I think that one of the, the reasons that we may see some activity that is unwanted is because of the lack of enforcement or going out there, or the lack of TLC to this area. I'm just having a really hard time, I will be very honest, about getting rid of green space, just because we have, for many years now, talked about how the lack of green space in the south part of Fresno. And I get it that there's going to be a nine-acre park being built-
An acre.
Or 10-acre, but we, we'd like to see more. And so I'm just having a trouble, I wish that there would be folks here from the community asking us to get rid of it. I'd like to see that. I don't know if there's anyone in the public that wants to talk about this issue. It's not just benches, from what I see, and I, and I get the, maybe the element that folks don't want to see there. I'm just having a hard time getting rid of park, a park, getting ready, rid of like big trees in, in a neighborhood where we know that trees are always very essential. So I'm just having a hard time with, with starting the process of- So I'm just having a hard time with starting the process of, you know, getting rid of it.
And Councilmember, I will adhere to your recommendations, and we've told the community leaders who've been asking this, and we've been meeting with for months on this, to come forward. But today is just the initiation part of it, in accordance to master plan. We will have a full council presentation, we'll have, after we do a series of community meetings. If the recommendation at the end is not to convert this to a playground and part of Head Start, but to keep it that way, then we will also have to have recommendations on how we improve the facility because this parcel right now is a deteriorating asset. And just so you know, we've actually met with the people who use the park on several occasions. Nobody walks to this parcel, they all drive there. We don't have any pedestrians walking to use this parcel, people drive there. We have had some issues with folks who are playing dominoes and openly drinking and doing drugs in the parcel. The police department has been very responsive, but the calls of service have been significant for the last few years. So our goal is to begin the conversation on whether this remains a viable park, or if this now becomes part of a Head Start program that allows the kids to Head Start. This Head Start, you should also know, yeah, this Head Start, you should also know, doesn't have any sidewalks in front of it, never has. Part of that reason is that we're planning to divvy it up for a street. So we're going to have to also make improvements because for being the biggest Head Start in the city, it doesn't even have a safe route to school sidewalk in front of it. So this is part of a bigger conversation, a bigger plan for that corner of the city.
One of the things that I just wanted to add, if you guys do in fact move forward with selling it, declaring it a surplus, that this money stays within the neighborhood and figure out another space. I get it, pocket parks are not, you know, ideal, but when we're talking about South Fresno and we don't have the space, for example, in the Tower area, pocket parks are the only solution to the fact that we don't have green space. So I know that there's a couple of people in the back from that area, I don't know if they wanted to comment, and you would allow them to comment right now.
Absolutely. Anybody who wants to address the council on this item, feel free to come forward. And we have a new system now, so if you see an iPad back there, feel free to sign up, but it's not necessary. You have the floor?
Well, I go to Pride Park every day, and it's true, we drive to the park. The only pushback that I have, I would love to see it go to the school, it'd be great. But we have to, I would like to see a facility for the elderly people that go to that park because that's their only resource, they don't have no place else to go. So when we talk about the park, I'm more concerned for them than anything. So if we can figure out something that we can do in place of, it'd be great.
We'll be happy to do that. We'll work with folks and come up with some options as part of the process. So council, we do anticipate bringing a full presentation and recommendation with a series of actions, so once we get to that place that there's an actual recommendation. Anybody else wish to address the council, come on up?
Hi, Carrie McCory, Fresno Building and Healthy Communities Project Director and Advocate for Parks, especially in West Fresno. My only concern is what Erin stated. That park is highly utilized by seniors, and if we sell that piece of land or surplus that land, where are they going to go? Because there's no community centers or no senior programs for them to go. And another thing that, I visit all the parks in West Fresno, and there's always alcohol and drug use being going on. So that's a city problem, that's something that city needs to fix. There hasn't been any parks in any other districts that has been closed because of shootings, because of drug activity, because of alcohol use. So that's a city problem, and that's something that the city needs to fix and take care of. But as far as selling that land, if you guys are going to surplus that land, then you need to have a backup plan for something for those seniors to do because they're the ones that utilize that park. Thank you.
Agreed, thank you. All right, with that, anybody else wish to address the council on this item? If not, we have Councilmember Bretterfield punched up, and our city manager.
Are we on the same item? This is a resolution, right?
Yeah, the question I had, you mentioned city clerk earlier about including lot two. So is that included in this?
Yes, at this point it is.
Okay, so what impact would that have on the next item that we're going to hear with the ENA, with the Italian company? Who would speak to that? I mean, is it city managers or city attorney?
Well, it would be inconsistent to list lot two as surplus and also include it in the ENA, you would have to choose.
Right, so that would be a problem, so I'd like to make a motion to remove this from one K, and we can discuss obviously the whole issue with the ENA and the next item. You'll second it?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
I just want to make sure that I put this on the record. So I will support this right now, but I'm not going to make a commitment to support depending on what the plan is, because I think that there are some valid concerns from folks that do highly utilize the park or the green space. It is sad that these are the types of green space that, you know, actually exist in South Fresno that we can have better amenities. But I think that whoever we plan to sell it to, that they do really plan, excuse me, that they do plan consciously, consciously on the users, current users of this area.
Thank you. And just for the record, West Fresno does have several community centers. It's fair to say that all of them are, have not been kept up to the condition, they have significant deferred maintenance, like every other facility, parks facility in the city. We will come up with an alternative to where folks who currently use a park, where they could use a similar space. That will be part of the conversation. But this officially begins, this has been debated for at least a decade, but we've never formally begun the process to actually conclude the debate. So I'm looking forward to working with everybody to conclude a set of recommendations and bring it back to the council. Is there any opposition to this item? All right, seeing none, the item, one K, is approved.
Do we have to make a vote on the motion to remove?
No, it was already, that was part of the motion.
Council President, could we do the 10 a.m. item one and two? I think they'd be relatively quick, we're...
Sure, Council.
Fifty-six minutes behind.
Sure. We will take your request under consideration.
Thank you.
The 10 o'clock item, a continued hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance annexing territory in District 11, number 11, and the area is in council District 4. Staff, you have the floor.
Motion to approve.
Motion made. Second, is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council, is there any opposition?
I just want to make sure, Mr. Benelli, we don't need to put anything on the record, do we? I know some of these are sensitive, you know, as it being a quote hearing and...
It is a public hearing, you did open it up for any discussion from the public, so I believe we've fulfilled those requirements for a public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Item number two, 10 a.m., a public hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex the territory in Libya special tax regarding the city of Fresno Community Facilities District Number 11. This is in council District 1. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Councilmember District 1, second.
It's been motion seconded. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Is there any opposition to item number two, the 10 a.m.? Seeing none, we'll move on. Now we'll go to unscheduled really quick. This is unscheduled oral communication. Anybody from the public wish to address the council on an item not listed on the agenda? We have no unscheduled oral communications, so we're good. The 10:10 appearance by George to address council. Come on up, George. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good morning. Respect the city council and staff. My name is George Boyagian. I'm a resident at Bullard and Marx, and I have several businesses in the Nessen and Sparsas council district. A quick background on what I've handed out to you guys. It is a, you will see a motion to dismiss a prior case that I had in 2009. You'll see a contract and agreement that myself have with the city of Fresno dated back in January 5th, 2010. You'll also see an old business license from 2009 and a seller's permit, and you also see a legal opinion letter from my attorney. Quick background on me myself, I was operating a cannabis dispensary in the city of Fresno in 2009 with the delivery service. At that time, the city of Fresno decided to sue us and force us to shut down. We countersued the city of Fresno, and the agreement we came up with the city of Fresno is right in front of you. If you can take a look at that, page one highlighted some parts for you, states that the city of Fresno recognizes that I've been operating a medical cannabis dispensary in the city of Fresno, and also gives you my old address of Fruit Avenue. And page two on the bottom, it shows my obligation to the city. The obligation was that I was to cease my operations of cannabis-related activities throughout the city. And then also on page, atop of page three highlighted, you will see that it states that, however, when the ordinance does change, that my obligation will cease without any action or any notice to the city. That agreement that I gave you right there for you to look over, it is an agreement, and it is my business license to operate within the city limits. I want to congratulate you guys on passing the ordinance that you did earlier this year. And I'm here to formally make an announcement that myself, my attorney, William McPike, who also had a cannabis dispensary in city of Fresno, will resume our operations. We don't believe we should stand in line with the rest of the folks that are going to be applying for this permit because we've been in line for 10 years. I've been appearing in front of city council every time this item came up, maybe with several of you. You've been aware of my situation throughout the whole time. And so if you have any questions, I'll take that, but I want to welcome you guys, including the police chief, city manager, and the entire city of Fresno, which will be our grand opening, hopefully in the next 30 days. We have applied with the Bureau of Cannabis Control with the state of California for our state permit. Our property and our operation are in full compliance with state regulations. And so if you guys don't have any questions, that was just about it. So I want to welcome you guys to our grand opening. We'll send out another press release when that day comes up. Thank you.
Council Vice President Capriolo, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would direct your attention to our city attorney. I think you're presuming a lot of facts in this situation, so you need clarity, and if you'd like to consult with our city attorney, I'd encourage you to do that. And that's all I want to say now because we're, there's potential litigation, I understand that, so thank you.
Yeah, what you see in front of you, Councilmember Capriolo, is the agreement that we entered into with the city of Fresno in 2010.
I understand, I'm just saying, before you go further, you probably should consult with our attorney and get some clarity, because I think you're assuming some things that are not necessarily in evidence at this time. So I don't want you to end up on the short end of a stick because you're saying things to us that may or may not be applicable. So I understand that, I hope you understand that, I'm trying to help you get a little bit more clarity than just coming in and saying this is what you're going to do.
Sure. Would you like to schedule, go ahead?
Counsel, if I could, because there may be others similarly situated that might be listening too. Approximately 10, 11 years ago, a number of dispensaries popped up. We went to court, the city obtained a permanent injunction, some of the operators agreed to voluntarily quit operating. And the permanent injunction and the agreement said that for so long as it's not legal in the city of Fresno, they would not operate. And so if it does become legal in the city of Fresno, which it is not yet, then that prohibition will go away, but that doesn't mean that dispensaries wouldn't have to follow our process and become legal. And so I don't anticipate that it will be legal in the next 30 days.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Sloan?
This is not the time to debate.
This is not the time, George. This is the opportunity to address the council, and we can't get in a back and forth.
So my, this is the opportunity to address the council, so I was my addressing. So me doing any of those things, Mr. Capriolo, does that require me taking any action on my part?
I'm not your attorney, sir.
Mary, over here on the, is a lawyer in her office working on the cannabis issues, if you would like to meet with her, she can step outside with you.
Sure.
Thank you. This concludes this item. The next appearance by, you have a comment, sir? What's your name?
Yeah, yes, it was the attorney that negotiated that stipulation. Apologize for not taking my hat off.
You need to put your name on the record, Bill, put your name on the record and address. We have to keep the record going.
Bill McPike, I've been an attorney for 40 years here locally, and I was involved in the wording on that stipulation, and George has presented my opinion letter to the council. And basically, a stipulation is a contract, it's an exchange of promises. And the consideration that we got was when the ordinance was changed, that we could reopen. And so this is an exception to seven licenses. And you can, it's signed by the city attorney, at that time, Assistant City Attorney Flores. So we have a legally binding contract. And if we're going to debate the meaning of this, and we're going to be excluded, there's three of us, then I see no alternative but to take it back into court. But I see this as an exception to the seven licenses. Also, it's kind of my attention through various rumors that certain licenses for certain people, and I have the names of those people, and certain addresses have already been committed. And I put all that information in a letter, mailed it to myself, and if those rumors come true, I'm going to turn that over to the appropriate agency to investigate that. And one of those is that there's a location by me and Ed's next to the Tower Theater that's already been guaranteed a license. So I would hope that with all the financial incentives here, that nobody on the council would be involved in any of that. So we'll talk, take Douglas T. Sloan's advice, talk to his assistant, and if she disagrees with this, I guess we're just going to have a judge figure it out. But I would encourage you to recognize the three parties to that stipulation as exceptions to the seven licenses. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes this item. The next item on the agenda is appearance by Michael Mayfield to discuss the community solar in Fresno and the status of the scoping project. You are from District 4. You will have three minutes to address the council.
Yes, hello, thank you. Good morning, Fresno City Council. My name is Michael Mayfield, I'm a member of the community, a recent Fresno State graduate who studied environmental science, and I'm someone who is very excited about the prospect of solar energy in the Fresno community. Now, I know that Councilmember Luis Chavez has brought up the idea of community solar time and time again to this body, but I don't know the current status of a feasibility report, a technical study. I ask that, you know, you guys provide some answers on this, and we seriously look into considering solar. I'd also like to take some time today to discuss the proposed solar energy product, project at the Clovis and Fresno Regional Wastewater Facility. It was discussed, I believe, at the last city council meeting. I'd just like to say that I'm really excited about this project, and I'm excited that the Fresno City Council is starting to make some serious steps in the right direction for adopting solar. I met with the director of Fresno Sustainability, Anne Cluas, yesterday, and she told me a lot of information about these things going on. But I would like to make a few things clear about this solar project. One, this is not a community-owned solar project, it's a 20-year leasing agreement with PG&E. Two... Two, the lease options noted in the leasing agreement, there's two options, I believe, item D and E, they call for either a 20% or 25% of the profits gained from this solar project to be reinvested into the Fresno community. This is the highlight of community choice energy, right? It's developing the solar energy and investing the profits in the local community. I strongly advise the Fresno City Council to consider advocating for these leasing agreements so that the profits designed, the profits gained from this solar project will come back into the Fresno community. I also advise that, you know, these funds be appropriated into an aggregate where Fresno can develop more solar. I really think that this project will serve as a proof of concept, and that if the city council is serious about addressing issues of air pollution and quality of life, that they'll strongly consider moving forward with community choice energy. Thank you.
Thank you, at the request. Thank you. This concludes this item.
Can I have some answers, please, about the status report of...
You can address your request to the city manager. She's only responsible for generating reports, so they'll get back to you.
Okay.
I actually have a staff person over here. Anne, can you raise your hand, please, who can take your card and get together with you at some point?
I met with Anne yesterday. I'm familiar with her, just...
You know what, I'll give you my card then, so we can let council get back to their business.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes your item. The next item at the council's request is the item 4A as an apple directing city staff to work with State Center Community College District and other education institutions on a program for discounted bus passes for students. Councilmember Soria, you have the floor.
Very simple resolution. It's just making sure that the city of Fresno is moving forward to be a partner in resolving the issue that came before us in the last couple months. I know that many of us on this dais have received phone calls, have been, have met with students, and they're concerned that, you know, terminating the program would impact their ability to access going to class and being enrolled at Fresno City College or some of the other community college institutions, like even Clovis Community. We do have President Goldsmith here, and I don't know if there are, I know some students were informed that we were going to be taking the resolution. But it's very simple, what we want to do, and I know that we've been in conversations with Greg, who is our fax director, and we're thankful for hearing our concerns and trying to work a deal out. We want State Center Community College District to, you know, essentially take this issue up before their budget cycle, which is by June. So that's why we want to make sure that our staff and that this body is able to vote on something and a resolution by June. So that's very simple. We're not giving any details. The details can be hashed out by our director and State Center Community College. But I did want to give an opportunity maybe to President Goldsmith, if we have some students, to talk about the importance of this partnership. And this is beyond just Fresno City College. It impacts the entire Community College District. It impacts also Fresno Unified and Fresno State because of the partnerships that we have built over the next, over the last couple years.
If I could add to that, I appreciate this resolution. I would urge our council to comply and conform with the Fresno State agenda and program. That addresses the fare box issue that Greg and his team have brought to my attention because you have to balance those numbers. And the Fresno State system seems to be most effective right now keeping that balance going forward. So I would urge that to be the benchmark for future discussions. Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion by Member Soria, second by Member Chavez. President Goldsmith, you will keep the floor now.
Good morning, President Arias and council members, many of whom I've spoken to directly with or have been in communication with. For those of you who already expressed your support for ongoing resolution, I'm very grateful. Councilmember Brettafield, I understand that my colleague, Dr. Bennett, will be meeting with you later this week or next week when she returns from accreditation visit. Councilwoman Soria, you're absolutely right. This does impact about 8,000 students from Fresno City College and several hundred students from Clovis Community College, which is actually in the city of Fresno. So I know that we've been working with staff and I had a wonderful, productive conversation with City Manager Kwan and Assistant Manager Jim. I can't say your last name, so I'm just going to go with Assistant Manager Jim. Thank you. I did want to let the council members know that since this decision by the district to make this move, some of the efforts that we've done at Fresno City College, as you're aware and you've probably been reading in the press, our student government has been grappling with how to do this. They're looking at, and have pledged their support and have passed a resolution, working with us in terms of sustainability efforts. Like many of you, they don't want to be viewed as giving just a handout to a few because while 8,000 students is a lot, we have 34,000 students at Fresno City College, 10,000 more than Fresno State. Many of these students, of course, come from impacted families, but they come from the north, they come from the south, and they come from all over. So we're incredibly proud of the partnership that we've had over the last several years, and we want to maintain it. Our student government has passed a resolution in support. There's a survey that is, or a resolution that is going around our campus that has already garnered about 800 signatures that will be coming to you, casting, urging you to try to help us find a resolution for a reduced fare. Also, the academic senate at Fresno City College has taken a straw poll in support of taxing themselves as employees to help these students. And then yesterday, Fresno City College Management Council also passed a similar action, saying that managers would also be willing to tax themselves. Lastly, our chancellor has formed a task force and will be providing ongoing options for him as this problem has been solved by a number of our sister colleges and cities throughout the state of California. We're not trying to land somebody on the moon. We're just trying to get kids on the bus and have the fare box not too impacted, have students have a little bit of responsibility as well. But also faculty and staff are looking to themselves about how we can help. Additionally, there's a number of funding sources that we're exploring that other colleges have used, and we're working with the state chancellor's office to get authorization so our district will feel more comfortable in using those. Lastly, I just want to thank you all for your ongoing support of our efforts of our students while doing this, and I want to thank you for your ongoing cooperation. Thank you.
Councilmember Carbossi.
President Goldsmith, now that I am your council member, I just wanted to wish you a happy belated birthday.
Thank you. All right, we have, we're going to go out to the public before we come back to the council. So Jonas, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. This is Jonas Fallos, homeless veterans advocate. I just want to take 30 seconds out of my time to honor Anne Gaston, a great advocate in our community we lost on the 17th of February. I want to thank each one of you for honoring her. Yes, I'm getting my veterans to City College. They've been using the bus. I was so upset, I got so many calls, why? We can work this out. It's worth the investment. The homelessness, I do look in my face, I am sick of seeing death, not only veterans, regular homeless people. So I'm looking, I'm thinking outside the box. Maybe they can go to school, better their life, so I don't have to see them on the streets suffering every day. And I just want to thank Carol Goldsmith. I never met you. My son goes there, he's autistic, he loved riding the bus. I'm teaching him how to ride the bus. He's going to become a welder. And I came home from advocacy, he was really angry, and I was like, what's going on? He said, they're cutting my bus fast, Dad. I said, don't worry, I got this. Yeah, we can work it out. $300,000 for 10,000 students, 8,000 students? It's worth it, investing in their education. And there's more poor students, I'm there every day on campus at Fresno City than they are at Fresno State. That is a fact. And I think, thank you for the pantry, my homeless veterans that I advocate for, they're able to eat. So let's keep them going to school, maybe I don't, you know, let's work towards a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonas. We'll bring it back to the council now. I just wanted to point out that I agree with State Center Trustee Richard Caglia, who was just quoted, saying that come high or, come hell or high water, we're going to find a solution. And I would concur with that statement, and that the city of Fresno will also be part of that solution. Councilmember Brettafield, you have the floor.
Yeah, Greg.
And then it'll be Councilmembers Barza and Carbossi.
While Greg's making his way up, I wanted to, Carol, thank you for being here. We had the opportunity to meet with Eric Payne a few weeks ago, and as well as Chancellor Parnell and Dr. Goldsmith earlier this week, and I appreciate the ongoing discussions. And I wanted to give a shout out to our transportation director, who's done a phenomenal job of looking at ways to find another solution. So Greg.
And I would just add that our transportation director has been working on ways to fund getting students to school since he's been in that department.
I think we all agree, we like Greg. He's done a good job.
So the question, Greg, is the city of Fresno, has the city of Fresno been participating in helping students up to this point?
Yes. So three years ago, we began a project, a contractual project with State Center Community College, that only included at that point Fresno City College, where we give a discount for bulk passes, per se. Under the master fee schedule, we're able to do that. That bulk rate is $1.10. So we're losing 15 cents. But we cap the program at $48. So regardless of how many times you ride, once you get to the $48 threshold at $1.15, we don't charge anymore above that. It's the same program that, it's modeled right after Fresno State. We just took out Fresno State and put State Center. And then two years ago, Clovis Community came into the program. And now their student body is a part of it also. Each student has to buy a $10 ASB card. It talks to our fare box, and they're good to go.
Yeah. So the city and the citizens of Fresno, the taxpayer, and supported by the city council, does help students at City College, Fresno City, Clovis Community, as well as Fresno State. And have been doing all along.
I've been doing it all along.
Right. And happy to do it. I think the council fully supports it, I support it. And we will proceed and continue to do that. Now we're being, well, not formally asked in any way, but I guess trying to find some resolution. So if I could ask President Goldsmith to, please come to the podium. So this happened, if I understand this right, because, is it accurate that the chancellor took out $300,000 that had been funding these bus passes and removed that from the budget?
I don't know if I'd exactly characterize it that way. Let me share with you.
Sure.
The funds that were used to be able to offset this program come from the generation of sales of parking permits throughout the district, parking tickets throughout the district, and it goes into a pot, one single pot, to be used throughout the district. The intended purpose for those funds are to support transportation, meaning the repay, and to support the ongoing maintenance of those surface parking areas, and also help pay for the policing of it and striping and that sort of thing. And transportation is an allowable cost in that fund, of that pot of money. Dr. Parnell, in his role as chancellor, also understands there's a lot of deferred maintenance, like you guys were talking about as well. So he didn't necessarily take the funding out, or it wasn't cut, he's just decided that he was going to reallocate those funds to the original intended purpose of those funds.
Okay, and it's 300,000?
Yes.
But as a result of that decision, it's now impacted people, kids, young people, not kids, young people who are riding buses, and that money is now going to be reallocated for fixing parking lots.
That's, that's what was the decision that was done earlier this year, yes, sir.
Okay. And I understand the trustees weren't even aware that that had happened.
That's my understanding, but I'm not privy to those conversations, sir.
Okay, thanks, Kim, President. You know, so I have a problem with this for a number of reasons. The trustees are determined by the electorate to make budgetary decisions. They weren't informed of this. And I don't think this is obviously a wise way to take 300,000 dollars. And I understand there's deferred maintenance and those things need to be taken care of. But now there's a bit of a crisis being created by that unilateral decision that didn't involve policymakers. That's a problem. We, as a city, we have lots of issues in terms of deferred maintenance, and if we made a cut, I don't think we would be going to the district for the school boards and saying, we have a problem, we need to make a change, could you help us, when we're already helping? So again, I have a problem with the way this process went down, and I think the trustees from the district, I think, are unhappy as well, as I understand, as they ought to be, just as if this council wasn't informed of a fiscal decision that took place and we had no knowledge of, and just read about it or heard about it later, we'd have a problem too. So I, for me, I think this issue ought to be addressed with the district. I mean, I think we should sit down and talk, and I have no problem with the resolution, we'll support it. But I think we should not just assume this problem. We are already helping, we will continue to help. I've been very involved in making sure there's transportation for students out at Clovis Community College. We need to continue to do everything we can to help our folks, our young folks, who are working to get education and are strapped financially. But I think this needs to be focused. And the focus needs to be that you have the chancellor who made a unilateral decision to take 300,000 dollars that was subsidizing people being able to travel to school on buses and put it in parking lots. And I got a problem with that. And I got a problem with trustees not knowing that this decision had been made. And I don't think the city of Fresno ought to assume this problem. And we can be at the table and help them, but I don't want to assume a $300,000 bill when we got lots of bills. And I understand in November, people are going to be going to taxpayers saying, we don't have any money and we need to tax you more money. So having said that, that's the concern I have. Support the resolution of sitting down and talking with people. But I don't think the city council or our taxpayers are assuming responsibility created by a chancellor of the district.
Thank you, Councilmember Brettafield. Councilmember Barza.
Just, Councilmember Brettafield, I'm listening intently to what you're saying, and I'm very hesitant to weigh in too much on your comments, as you can imagine. But I do want the board at Fresno City College, all of you, I know there's a few board members in the audience, as well as the city council members who are here. The conversations that I've been in with the chancellor and without the chancellor, I do not believe it is anyone at Fresno City College, the staff or students or faculty or me, believe that you should be the sole answer. Now, it'd be wonderful if we lived in an environment where everybody could ride the bus for free, absolutely. I think everybody at Fresno City College understands that that's not the world in which we live in. So the only thing we're asking, and I'm very appreciative of Councilmember Soria and all the council members, to pledging the support of what we've been doing, trying to be able to find a solution. I would humbly ask, as we, as my partner over here discussed, it is a reduction of $1.10 from like $1.25. And I have not seen the actual contract. So what I've been told, though, is that there is a cap that you spoke about of 40...
Forty-eight.
$48. And then the regular monthly passes is 48. So what's happened is, while it's an upfront reduction, and we're grateful, it doesn't materialize in a reduction because our students take the bus often to, to take a number of classes and also go to work in doctor's office and all those things. So as we look together collaboratively for a solution, I'm thankful that you're pledging to do so because I know the people at Fresno City College and our students and our staff. And I would argue also, our chancellor wants to do something collaborative as well.
Thank you, President Goldsmith. Councilmembers, Barza, you have the floor.
Yes, so, you know, when it comes to these, the set of students, they are my students. I'm a faculty member at City College. They're also my constituents. I care very much about this issue, I care very much... I care very much that they continue to receive the opportunity to ride at a reduced rate. Greg, we have been, we have certainly been doing our part.
Yes.
And the biggest issue I have with this, with this, is that we had an arrangement, I think, that was working, you know, fairly, fairly well. When you look at where the boat was rocked, it certainly was not on our end, on the city of Fresno's end, was rocked on the side of State Center. And that's, I think, a reflection of very poor leadership, the State Center level, not the FCC administration. I really appreciate President Goldsmith and her sticking up for the students, but above her at the State Center level, the chancellor's office, as well as those trustees on the board, who have yet to say anything or to support our students. And so I want to remind the public and remind the trustees, those who are listening or who are going to hear this message, that they run the chancellor's office, the chancellor's office does not run them, just as a reminder of how government works and how the structures there at the district work. And so I hope that we can come to a resolution. I'm in support of this resolution that Councilmember Soria has brought forward, and I think we're going to get there.
So Councilmember Sparza, you're absolutely right. We continue to work with the district. Just last night, Joe Vargas, my assistant director, and I were at Clovis Community College working with their ASB. They actually have a different problem. They actually want a bus to serve the campus and have presented for three years now to me petitions and, you know, requests and what have you. So we finally have run the numbers. And it would take us about $533,000 to take a bus out there. And we just can't afford that. But we're going to continue to talk to them, and we're going to continue to work on this. I have heartburn overall about the resolution, because I'm already doing the work. I don't need the direction. We continue to do the work. Look, this is, I'm a public servant. I am serving the public by doing the work already. I was asked in a private meeting with Councilmember Soria and Councilmember Arias and Laura from your office, as part of the Transportation Committee, to dig deeper and work on a solution. And we're doing that. And we continue to reach out to our partners too, about helping to support the State Center, because ultimately, I believe there will be a solution found at the State Center side, and there'll be a solution found on our side, where we will help them possibly reduce their cost, their overall cost. And we're working on that. So again, I really don't need a resolution. I just need your support to talk to your elected counterparts at the district, to help them be motivated to get a part of this action. I appreciate Rich Caglia last night, you know, and his comments. And yes, it was a surprise to the trustees, because we put it in our newsletter. And then students started tweeting to Dr. Goldsmith over a weekend, like, hey, what's going on? And then they showed up to the board meeting that week. And that's when the trustees found out. So from that point, we also picked up the phone and started working with the district. Our contact at the district level, hey, how can we help you? What can we do? What do you need? And Jamie Holt from the Air Board, I have to give her kudos, on her own, went to the board, filled out a comment card, spoke on unscheduled communications. And that's how the Air Board got into this. And now this discussion about $86.17 may help, but that's really specifically targeted for the south-central Fresno neighborhood. And part of Councilmember Arias's district, actually, it's all your district, Council President, is the 617 neighborhood, so.
And Greg, we appreciate those efforts. I think, you know, we appreciate what you've been doing. I think the purpose of Councilmember Soria's resolution here is to show that we, as a council, are also collectively as a body supportive of those efforts. And sometimes these things need to be said on the record. So I see, you know, I see your point, I see your perspective, but I think this was a necessary discussion to have up here on the dais.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that conversation. And Esmeralda and I had a very nice talk last Friday. We were celebrating birthdays for the office, and I stepped out and we had a great conversation. She told me what this was all about. But I just think it's not worded correctly. If you want to put the onus back on the district to come work with us, that's where it should be.
Thank you, Mr. Butterfield. Complete, Mr. Sparza? All right, Councilmember Chavis?
Thank you. President Goldsmith, thank you for a couple of conversations that you and I had when we ran into each other. As you know, this issue was brought to me by students in my district, where you compiled the zip codes that students that were going to be affected, I had over 1,300, 93702, 93725. And so I'll partially take the blame for kind of stirring the pot. I did send a letter to the board over there, communicating that. And more importantly, our intent, and I don't want Greg to, for in any way, shape or form, perceive this as to anybody trying to say that we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing, because, you know, I've got a lot of respect for you, Greg, and we work back here. I know you're on top of things. Oftentimes, though, these conversations happen in more of a different setting. And I can tell you that as a faculty member for Fresno City College back 15 years ago, I know what that population, how they struggle, and who we serve. And I see this as an opportunity for the city to partner with and problem solve an issue that is very real, particularly for college students right now, where we see their tuition going up, we see books going up. And as a father of two students that are going to college that are very fortunate to have somebody that can help them financially, I know that that's not the case for the majority of the students that you serve. I know what those demographics are, I know what those income levels are. And I think for me, as a policymaker, and this will be a policy call that this body takes, I'm okay with helping those students. We talk a lot about, you know, ending poverty and helping people improve themselves. And I think this is an opportunity for the city to be a true partner. And I said this on social media, where it costs the city of Fresno the same to, the same amount of resources and dollars to run a bus, whether that bus has 25 people or five people. And the way I see it is, I'm okay with giving our students a ride to school, because they're going there to improve their lives, to make themselves better, and to also be more productive taxpayers in the future. They're also taxpayers. And so, you know, for Greg, because I know this conversation's kind of gone a little bit, I was, I think for me, the purpose of this is not to so much flag any of those issues, but more give direction as far as to what we're comfortable with and help you in your negotiations when you're dealing with our partners, because I do see Fresno City College as a partner. And so just for the record, I'm actually okay with completely subsidizing transportation for our kids to get to community colleges and actually improve their lives. Thank you.
Councilmember Caprero?
Thank you. I think we're all 100% behind the students and their education, getting people to school. But as a council, we have to balance that with the economic reality of the situation. So we can, I think there's no one up here that does not support students and getting to education, that's a given. But the reality is, how do we do that financially? That balances the whole program. And Greg, you're the latest of a long line of great directors at FACS, Bruce Rudd, Jim Shad, now you, and you're doing a great job. So I want you to keep doing that. I know you're going to do the right thing. I think the approach you've announced right here is the best. And, you know, I'm a graduate of City College as well, and it's really, it's a little bit shameful that this happened and we were blindsided. But because we're blindsided, doesn't mean we have to pick up the pieces and put it together. That's incumbent upon the State Center Community District, in my view. But we'll do our share, just like you indicated, and we have done. We're going to get those kids to school, they're going to get educated. If they're unfortunate, they can maybe get elected and come up here. I don't know that I recommend that. But anyway, I think we're all on the same page. So hurrah for the students, but more importantly, for you and your team to put something together with the president. Thank you.
Councilmember Karbasi, you have the last word.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we always make it that way? So, you know, I'm a former student body president at what is now Clovis Community College, so this is a personal issue for me too. Transportation shouldn't be a difficulty, whether you're in Fresno Unified or Fresno State or Central or wherever you are. But I also want good policy, because I want to make sure we consider the implication, financial implications of what we're doing. We've done our part, and I think we can do a little bit more. But Director Barfield, I have a question for you, if you can come up. While you're doing that, we didn't manufacture this problem. Councilmember Sparza said that, it needs to be very clear. And it looks like the board didn't know about this, they were as blindsided as we are. I'm really encouraged by the comments I've been reading from board members, including Richard Caglia and John Leal, about what they're going to do. I like the idea of us in solidarity, kind of like this resolution from City College about what the students are willing to actually charge themselves more.
Right, right.
But I don't want to cripple you at the negotiating table with a policy. So what I want to suggest, Mr. President, if we can do a quick five-minute recess and talk to Greg, because you've been on this side of the dais with the former council member, to maybe change the language so that we can consider the full implications of what we're going to do. Because you had some language concerns, and I want to make sure we acknowledge that and see if we can make those changes.
Councilmember Karbasi, I'm going to have to respectfully decline the request for a break. We're already about an hour late, and we got two more items before lunchtime.
I want to vote for this. I understand. I'm talking about five minutes. I want to vote for this, and I want to support my colleague. I just want to make sure his concern can be addressed. That's why I asked for a brief break. That's the only reason why.
A potential resolution. Greg, if you happen to have it, is there a word or two we can change right now?
Well, I haven't seen that one.
Okay. But I mean, we could do it orally.
So let's pause, let's get control back of the little circus. If you're done with your questions, I have a few questions for the director. Your operational budget in FACS, how much of that comes from Measure C?
11 million.
11 million of what total? If you could bear with me.
Out of 54.
54?
After 54.
Okay. And the current rate that we give seniors for riding the bus, is that the same rate that we're giving students?
No, so seniors ride at 65 cents per ride.
So 65 cents per ride for seniors? And is it 1.15 for students, 1.10 for students?
1.10 under the pass program.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barfield. I don't have any other questions for you. Just some context from my part. As you know, I'm a former trustee of State Center. And when I was on the board, we were considering the Measure C bond to build the new college campuses. And State Center had a long history of building colleges in the middle of nowhere. They would be the tip of the spear for sprawl in our city. They built a campus in Madera, they built one in Clovis, and they built them away from the actual population where people lived and where those existing public transit. That was their history. When I was on the board, we reversed that policy and said, you have to build where people live, and you have to build where there's public transit available. So that's where we ended up with expanding the Fresno City College campus and building a parking garage, a new campus in southeast, a new campus in southwest Fresno. From my perspective, State Center had a long and documented history of creating this problem of sprawl and a structural challenge for their students who they know they serve. This isn't an Ivy League system. This is a system that's supposed to be low barrier, no barrier entrance into public education. And with that, they knew that they were creating this problem. At the same time, everybody in this room and the county of Fresno pays towards the Measure C sales tax that funds public transit and a portion of FACS. They're already paying into the system for public transit and other services, freeways and roads. I don't see this, as Councilmember Chavis said, these buses are going to run. On average, I believe each bus runs about 200 miles a day. They're going to run whether they have five people or 30 people. They're going to create a pollution footprint irrespective of what fees people are paying to get on. I do recognize there's a budgetary challenge that we have to address. And I also recognize that this is not our fault. This responsibility and failure squarely sits at the door of the chancellor of State Center. They made this decision to abruptly cancel a program without working with partners. From my experience, they continue to pursue a foreign exchange program in Mexico and travel continuously to out of country. If they have the money to travel internationally and start a new program in a different country, then they ought to have the 300,000 to serve thousands of their kids with basic public transit, especially given that students are already paying. In their tuition, they not only pay for their tuition, they pay for healthcare, they pay for parking and the permits. They're already paying into the Measure C tax whenever they buy anything in this county. So folks are already paying. And this is a failure of the district administration. I also think that it is a failure of the State Center Community College Board. They have known this for months. My frustration is, we've known of this problem for months. We have all had individual conversations with State Center trustees, with staff, with the mayor. Everybody seems to be talking about a solution, but nobody wants to conclude the conversation to actually bring a solution forward. I do believe that 80% of the responsibility lies on the State Center Board, and 20% of the responsibility lies on the city of Fresno, because these buses will run irrespective of what people are paying to get on and off. So I'm going to be supportive of this resolution, because it is the only way that we can legally express our position to the Office of Governing Board. And it's the only way that we can express our position to the staff, that we want a solution sooner rather than later. And I would hope that the State Center Board, going forward, does not take advice of their staff, which is, don't ask questions and don't talk to the press, and, you know, read the talking points that we give you and keep things quiet, because this is exactly how we get to this point. Things, folks are blindsided, they blow up, students have to pick between a meal and a bus pass or dropping out of school. So with that, if there's no other comments, there's a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any opposition? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Barfield, for all the work that you've done in trying to solve this problem. That's not of our making. With that, we'll go to the next item for B, and then we'll get to the last contested item.
President, I'm going to recuse myself from that item.
All right. There's a, is there a motion to approve the item? Motion been made by Member Soria, seconded by me. Any opposition to this item?
Thinking in public?
Oh, I'm sorry. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any opposition to this item? All right, the item is approved, 5-1, with Member Chavis recused for the record.
I'm a no.
Yes. Councilmember Butterfield's a no for the record. All right, now we'll get to item 111. City staff? Item 111 was pulled by me, so I'll start the conversation. Well, now, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. I'm getting the Joe Biden effect. But you shouldn't laugh, because at least my candidate is doing. Councilmember Sparza?
Joe's a little better looking, though.
Yes, yes. City staff, you have the floor. Would you like to address anything, or would you like me to start?
Go ahead and go with your questions.
Thank you. So just some context, council colleagues, for your information, this is in my district, and I've been spending quite a bit of time on this item in the last few months. This exclusive negotiation agreement was approved in 2018, right? In the last meeting of 2018 before Christmas. And it essentially gave the applicant exclusive negotiating rights over property that the applicant didn't own or didn't have control over, which is the North Fulton area. That property is owned by multiple owners, including the city of Fresno, the Housing Authority, CVS. Since then, they've made some progress towards the ENA outline. They've also, having reached some of the milestones, called for in their ENA. We recognize that this is a grand vision and includes housing for downtown that we all want. But I want to point out a couple of things. The ENA calls for them to have financial information provided to a city, identify the public improvements that the city needs to make in that area in order for this project to go through, negotiate a DDA within the term limits of this ENA, disclose interests of the parties. Those components, in my view, have not been reached. Those components, in my view, have not been reached yet. They have made progress in developing site plans, renderings, things of that nature, and working with the staff. Since the approval of this ENA, the city council has also passed an ordinance related to public property and the disposal of public property. The council asked to unanimously approve the new ordinance that requires every public property that we dispose of to go through the Surplus Act process, where we declare it surplus, we make it available to everyone, there's a bidding process and the city gets to pick the best use of that public space. In addition to that, state law, effective January 1st, was changed, related to disposal of any public property. That includes now charter cities like the city of Fresno. State law also now requires that any disposal of city property go through the Surplus Act process, that we declare it surplus, and that we make it available to entities with a priority towards housing. Yesterday, the mayor and I met with the applicants to review the status of their ENA, and we also proposed an extension of the ENA with a couple of changes. And I can walk you through the changes. I'm supportive of the housing project, the vision for building more housing in downtown, but I'm also practical in the sense that I know how difficult it is. I also know that if we don't have benchmarks of performance for any applicant that is requesting access to our public space and our public property, that we tend to delay and lag progress. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the item with the following changes. The changes would be, oh, just so background information, the original scope of this project included developing housing on the property of the Housing Authority. Since then, the Housing Authority voted unanimously to decline participating in this project and not making their property available for the development of this project. So that's been a significant action that's taken place. So the proposal would be to approve an extension for six months with additional 90 days if they meet the following conditions. They draft the DDA within the term limit of the ENA, they provide the financial, the pro formas to the city to ensure that we know that this project is going to pencil out. They have a letter of interest with CVS secured. Part of this project calls for them to relocate CVS a ways down the parcel. So we need to ensure that there is a closure in that agreement. That they address the historical artwork. For those of you who don't, are not familiar with the area, if you recall that Fresno stamp mural, one of the buildings, this proposal would build essentially a multi-level parking garage next to that artwork. So we would have to find a way to address the artwork, whether it's relocation, whatever it might be, it needs to be mitigated as part of this project. It would also include identifying the city for any legal challenges that this project would pose. That is standard language in any agreement that we have, that city must be identified of any legal challenges. And then lastly, that parking lot two, which is not necessary for the relocation of CVS and the housing project on their proposed parcel, would be admitted from this project and would be declared surplus property and made available to the applicant and anybody else who wishes to bring forward a proposal to the city for development of that law. That law currently generates about $100,000 in revenue, in parking revenue to the city. So by declaring their surplus, it would also allow the city staff to come forward with how they're going to make up the revenue loss of that parking lot if it's eventually sold to any particular party or what other adjustments we have to make. So that's my recommendation to the council, is that we extended for a total of nine months with those conditions and that we ensure that there's progress being made on this overall grand vision. It has changed significantly since the council approved it in 2018. And we think that making sure these benchmarks are in place will allow everyone, including the city staff. As you can imagine, some things get stuck in the planning department for longer periods in time than we wish, but it would make sure that we come back in six months and have an update on the progress of this, you know, grand vision of a project. So with that, that's my motion.
Council President Arias, if I may make a few comments?
Yes, ma'am. You have the floor. It's been seconded. All right. Go ahead. You have the floor.
The developer has made substantial efforts to complete the actions that you've listed as three through nine in your amendments and is willing to continue to make efforts to meet those milestones by the end of the extension. However, the developer states that, and the city manager and the administration support that there needs to be a 12-month extension to the ENA to fully complete the milestones that you've presented today.
So you're asking for, instead of nine months, for 12 months?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That would also ensure that the parking lot two is omitted from the proposal.
No, it does not. The ENA specifies parking lot two as part of the ENA, as that is part of the developer's bigger vision for this project.
I understand, but my motion is to admit parking lot two from the proposal. You're speaking specifically to the extension of the timeline.
Correct. And my second comment is that lot two be included.
And that's your recommendation?
Correct. And the city manager and the administration's recommendation.
Thank you. Well, city council, that's the, is there any other comments you'd like to provide?
I know that the developer has something that they would like to give to the clerk to enter into the record.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Cliff Titellian with Titellian and Company, representing the interests of the project that is the subject of this matter at this moment. In response to comments by council member Arias, I'd like to submit for the record a letter. And also request distribution to all of you at this moment. See if I have enough. There should be one for you and seven more.
Thank you.
I'd like to start my comments by first expressing my appreciation to the mayor's administration, the Development Department, for all the time and the effort. We've spent several months in collaboration and cooperative efforts in putting the project together to the point that we have. With regard to financial information, I'd like to point out that the pro formas and the financials regarding the project were provided directly to the EDC pursuant to the request by the mayor's office in asking the EDC to prepare an impact report. There's been a very thorough impact report, which I understand may have been distributed to the council already.
For the record, when was that distributed? We haven't received anything. Was that, he indicated that an impact report was distributed to the council? Okay. I just want to make sure it's for the record that we have not received it. Thank you.
I have direct knowledge that the mayor's office has received it. And to what degree it's been distributed, I am unaware, but I'm told that it was distributed to some degree or another. Nonetheless, financial information that is available up to this point in the development of the project has been provided. I want to start by saying that in the amendment that's being proposed, we have been working toward and do intend to comply with all of those conditions, which are inherently a part of a development agreement anyway, with the exceptions of items one and two. Limiting the time and separating parcel two could cause, and I project that it will cause irreparable harm to the project and threaten our preliminary efforts and ongoing efforts with regard to financing the project and hence jeopardizing the viability of the project. And I submit for further consideration that these kinds of limitations, after the time and effort and resources expended by everybody involved, will send a significantly negative message to the development community in terms of further developing our downtown. And downtown, I'd like to point out, while everybody has a duty to their own district, everybody acknowledges that downtown is the core of our city. And hence, I purport to, and assert that, your consideration for moving this project forward is in also serving the best interests of our city at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Titellian. We have some other speakers who've signed up. Eddie, you have the mic. Thank you. Eddie Clement, you have three minutes.
Good morning, council members, everyone at the front here. My name is Eddie Clement. I'm a representative of the Northern California Carpenters Regional Council. And at this time, we would like to express our support for the project as well. We know that it's a very valued project for the city. There's a lot to be gained from a project of this size and nature with the living component, the lease component, the parking component. There is a lot to be gained. We have been working with Titellian and Company, specifically Mr. Titellian, in being optimistic in a partnership in the build-out of a project of this nature with him. We would ask that the city do approve the ENA as proposed at this time and that we can move forward and that all interested parties come together. If this does come to fruition and a partnership is developed with us as well, as you know, we can and will provide the skilled workforce needed to complete a project of this size and nature on time and, of course, on budget. But it also contributes to the apprenticeship programs involved in a career path that these individuals are still on and are seeking. So it is very advantageous for them to continue that career path through an apprenticeship program with the carpenters, as well as teaming up with a developer in the city and working with the city on a project of this size. So at this time, we again just express our support for this and we do hope that the city does move forward and pass ENAs proposed. Thank you.
And just for context, council, the initial ENA that was approved by the city council was for nine months, with the authority for the city manager to extend it for three more months, if I recall correctly, for one year. My recommendation is to extend it for another six months with another 90 days, which would be a total of two years, to bring this project to fruition in the form of a DDA. The ENA did require that a DDA be negotiated within the first nine-month period. Staff extended that time as they had the ability to. And to this day, a year later, we don't have a DDA. My proposal would give the developer a total of two years to complete a DDA. In the meantime, we have to make sure that the intent of the new state law and the new ordinance by the city was to make sure that we weren't doing backroom deals for city properties. The initial ENA gave the developer exclusive negotiating rights over property that he did not own or control, which is pretty shocking that, you know, that would even be approved. Since then, some of those property owners have declined to participate in this proposal. And so this would require that there be some conclusion to this work in the next six to nine months, because each month that this goes on and we tie up two city properties, this ENA calls for the developer to have exclusive rights to negotiate the purchase of the Tuolumne reversal and parking lot two. Two properties that we would essentially be negotiating with the developer without giving any of his neighbors that own property in that vicinity an opportunity to propose or to bid for that property. I think for that level of exclusivity, we should expect benchmarks to actually be met when it comes to the performance. In my review of the ENA, it required a DDA to be negotiated within the first nine months. That did not occur. They were given an extension. That still did not occur. It required for a commitment from CVS to take place. I know they've had conversations, they're going back and forth with CVS. I expect that that will require some additional months to conclude. But at some point, we have to have these projects move forward and not simply tie up our city assets, because what we would be doing is land banking public property that could otherwise be developed in a time when we have a housing crisis and there's a need for more projects. Councilmember Betterfield, you have the floor.
Yeah. City manager, in response to Council President Arias and some of his concerns, I'd like to give you the opportunity to address those concerns. I think, you know, he raises many good points, but how would you address those?
You know, I'd like to say that we've been working really closely with Cliff. I have Dan Zack in the back, our assistant director in planning, and we've been working really closely with Cliff on making sure that. We've learned a lot since we've been in an exclusive negotiating agreement with Cliff about the properties. His initial project wanted to change some things on Fulton, which we, in negotiation discussion with him, have came to a design that we are very, much more comfortable with. He has continued conversations with CVS, which is a key piece of development in the northern part of Fulton. And I would like to respect the fact that Cliff and acknowledge has spent a lot of money getting to the point where he is. And that's why we supported 12-month extension. I'm happy to come back in six months with an update as to his progress. But, you know, another six months, I don't think is land banking. I think it gives him ample opportunity to do something that we really, really need as an anchor for the northern part of Fulton.
How much money has been spent?
Cliff, Aldi, do you know? I don't want to speculate.
As indicated in the staff report, approximately $119,000, just in the utility drawings and the topos and the elevations. That's not to mention the staff time and the, you know, the time the developer has spent on his own talking with CVS.
Right. Thank you, Aldi.
And what is your expectation within the year that will be accomplished, should be accomplished?
Aldi, do you want to list out the milestones that we're talking about in the ENA, please?
So the milestones that Councilmember Arias included, I can mention those or I can mention the fact that the DDA will be negotiated and entered into by the expiration of the ENA. Sorry. Would you like me to go through the milestones that Councilmember Arias mentioned?
No, no, no. I heard. What, from our perspective as a city, what we're expecting? I understand what he's looking for, but what's outlined as far as the ENA?
The extension.
Yeah.
It is going to continue conversations between staff and the developer. He will execute the LOI with CVS, which will allow him to move forward and get the project scope finalized, a construction schedule, and the financing in place. Before the expiration of the 12-month extension, the DDA would be entered into and brought to council for your consideration.
Okay. And what, and what else? Anything else? That's it?
That's it.
Okay. And what if that's not accomplished within the year?
Huh?
What if that is not accomplished?
Then the ENA expires.
Okay. And what's the plan at that point, city manager?
To let the ENA expire. And if there is a push at that time by the current mayor or the current city manager, whoever that may be, to extend the ENA, then we would come back to council. We would need to come back to council to do that. But right now, it's our understanding with conversations with Cliff that he's comfortable with the 12-month extension, as are we, and that we can get the development agreement negotiated in that amount of time.
I would like to note that in the current ENA, there is a section that does describe that in the event that the developer and staff are not ready to bring a DDA forward, they can bring an extension forward other than the 180 days granted by the city manager's office. So it does allude to the fact that if things go awry or project gets set back because of things like the CVS conversations, that it allows for an extension if council considers that.
Okay. And your plan is to come back to the council in six months?
If that's what council, I'm happy to do so. I'm just trying to get us the 12 months that I really think the developer needs.
Okay. And Mr. Titellian, why 12 versus nine months? Why is the extra three months needed?
If you will.
Yeah.
I'm having difficulty hearing right now in this environment, so if you'd repeat the question, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. Why do you need 12 months as opposed to nine months, as is requested by Mr. Arias?
The 12 months, we came to a conclusion with 12 months in identifying what needs to be done. to be done in order to get to a point where we have substantive material to put into the development agreement. The negotiations, for example, the negotiations with CVS, and Mr. Orman was on the phone with us for the initial few conference calls, and they warned us, we move very slow. And right now, where we're at in the negotiations, and as an example of what's taken time, is the negotiations with CVS has to be carefully orchestrated in terms of the deal points with what we need to do in structuring the development agreement for finance purposes. Everything ties together. It took time to get that started. At this point, we have a proposal to them. We've gone a couple rounds. We've ironed out their parking requirements, their signage requirements, and there's a significant amount of details, and candidly, irrespective of benchmarks and how fast we move, we can only move as fast as they respond. And I'll give you one example. Mr. Lamage, Director, Regional Director of Real Estate, was traveling during one point of exchange and correspondence, and he directed somebody else to respond. They forgot, and a month went by despite our efforts of following up. Those things are unpredictable. To move six months forward, when I talk about putting the project in jeopardy, including the finance efforts, in order to get financing, most fundamentally, we need to have a development agreement. CVS being the owner of the property, the city being the owner of the right-of-way, and having had discussions with regard to the purchase of that land at market value, I'd like to get rid of the presumption, perhaps, that we're dealing on property we don't own. We need to put the LOI together. We need to have the construction drawings developed further. We need to bring on a general contractor, get through the design-build process. Then we have a budget that can go to an appraiser, and there, along with the development agreement and a specific construction budget, we're able to get the project appraised and then financed. I've submitted financing letters, and I think that by anybody's standard, those letters are very strong for anybody at, for a project at this stage in the process. Six months just isn't enough, and the 12 months, and the direct answer, Mr. Braderfeld, is this was a conclusion mutually reached in discussion in the last meetings that we had with the city manager, the mayor's chief of staff, and the development department.
Okay, so for me, I'm, I'm willing to, to do the, the, thank you, Mr. Titellian. I'm willing to do the 12 months. I know you made a motion, you, you raised very valid points, and I'll be paying close attention as this unfolds. I don't know if you got a second. I want to respect this as your district. If, if it passes, or do you want to make a?
Yeah, just a couple of clarifying points, and then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Chavez for comments. The initial agreement reached by the applicant and the city was 15 months. You would have 15 months to negotiate development agreement. That's a total time, nine months, and then the city manager had a time, ability to extend that. That time was extended. Now, we're being asked to do another 12 months, because 15 months wasn't enough. My compromise is we'll extend it for six months and give the city manager the authority to extend it for an additional 90 days if progress is being made. As the city manager indicated, we don't know what administration's going to be here next year. We were promised a DDA in 15 months. We're now being asked to kick it for another 12 months, which means that's a whole nother year in a total of two years that we're tying up city property for any other development that may be viable. I, I did read the finance letters that you indicated described, and the backup material that's included in the agenda is an email from CVS to Tim Orman indicating that you guys are talking. It's a letter from your bank indicating that you have a banking relationship with them, and that you're talking. That, for me, isn't sufficient after 15 months to justify an additional year without having to come back to this body and check in on any progress. So I think six months is reasonable, is practical. We also, you indicated Lot Two. Lot Two is not part of the project for CVS. Lot Two is across the street. I think if we're going to start disposing of parking lots, I just would remind my colleagues that a month ago, the city manager's office produced a report recommending that we not dispose and mess with the parking department, because it was operating and making some improvements. We just had a meeting last week where the parking department told us that they don't have enough revenue to pay and police and enforce the largest parking district we have by Veterans Hospital. So on one hand, we're being told, leave all our parking, parking assets as is. Then we're being told, we don't have enough parking revenue to do our job, and then we're being told, let's start selling parking assets without asking for financials, without asking for performance. Give us a year to figure this out. So although that might have been provided to the EDC, the EDC doesn't have the authority to sell our assets. That might have been provided to the administration. The administration doesn't have the authority to sell our assets. This body does. So that's why I wanted more time to figure this out with the applicant. We did meet yesterday for an hour. They've made it clear that, for them, it's what they want, and they're not open to any adjustments based on what discussions we had. So I'd like to hear from the, my rest of the council colleagues, but I hesitate to give anybody exclusive rights to our property without having performance benchmarks that have to come back to us, because ultimately, we will be held accountable when the deals go bad. And as a reminder, a year ago, we gave a exclusive negotiation agreement for the relocation of Club One into the Spire Garage. That deal didn't work out either. Now we're stuck with a, an asset that's depreciating. That action triggered a domino effect to sell other parking assets, because Grizzlies couldn't be guaranteed parking in the Spire anymore. I don't want to repeat previous mistakes. I want to have some clarity on what's expected from the applicant, what's expected from the city, and us to be required to be involved before we continue down the path, because we don't know what professional staff and what mayor is going to be here 12 months
Worthful thinking, Gary. I, I did vote for this ENA last year, and, and I remember that, some of the comments that we heard from Eddie and the great work that carpenters do, that was one of the reasons why we were supportive of this project. And I want to just kind of paint the picture, because I don't think folks understand, Mr. Titellian's been investing in downtown Fresno for a number of years. I mean, his projects, I think, speak for themselves. I don't think there's any question that you're going to be able to finance this project. What you did with the Kepler School, what you did with the number of projects here in the, in the city of Fresno, I think, are proof of your ability to deliver results. And I think we're, we're splitting hairs at this point, where I understand the, the benchmarks, which I think you're agreeing to that anyway. What you would like, though, is some time to, to process that with CVS. And so here's the, the point where I think we're at, where if we just say, okay, it's going to be six months, you do all this work, and then if, for whatever reason, you don't have something secured, but you're really close, I mean, is this body really going to say, no, you know, time's up, you're not going to be investing in this community? I don't think that's what my colleague is saying either.
You're absolutely right.
But I do think that we do need to have some, some kind of a guidance as to what the expectations are, and what's been abundantly cleared from this conversation to me is that the communication between the administration, the council member, and the developer has not been oftentimes in synchrony, and I think that, that needs to be looked at, because at the end of the day, it is my colleague's district, it is a citywide project, but we got to be respectful. So, so with that, I've, I've got a proposal that my colleagues agreeable, just a recommendation, because I'm also not sure on what the Lot Two piece is or the revenue. You've been more involved. If we set that conversation aside, but give the developer that opportunity to produce, and if we come back and he's close to finalizing this project, that we don't just pull the plug on that.
Councilmember, I'm, I'm open to not declaring the parking lot two as surplus today, so that it doesn't, you know, begin the process of having to consider other public bids. I'm acceptable to keeping that parking lot city-owned and letting the, the applicant continue to work with the city for six months, but there would be no guarantee that the lot would be up for sale. That, that has to be a conversation once we have the full scope of the proposal and we see the financing, everything pencil out. So if you want to omit parking lot two from the item and from going to surplus, I'm supportive of that.
With regards to the timing of him, are you, are you flexible with regards? I know that you wrote in, said 180 days after the six, or 90 days, sorry, with that. So, so what would that look like for, from a practical aspect?
So what it would look like is, the extension would be for six months, and then the city manager, if, as you described, they're making progress towards, you know, an LOI with CVS, then the city manager would have authority to extend that for another 90 days.
So it'd be a total of nine months.
A total of nine months, but at that point, it would have to come back to council, and there would have to be a DDA already, ready to be drafted. So my proposal to the applicant yesterday was, we, we've given the city and the applicant 15 months to draft a DDA. It hasn't happened. I understand the complexity, the size and scope of the project, that the applicant has never done a housing project of this magnitude. It's hard work in general, but at some point, we need to have a DDA, and I just continue to extend the ENA that locks up city property without conclusion. So I think the difference of three months is practical and reasonable, especially given that we're going to go through a transition of administrative leadership with the new election that took place, and this council needs to have a check-in process for this, this development agreement.
So we're looking at essentially nine, nine months, with the understanding that this body would not just shut it down and say, hey, you know what, the gentleman's invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? That's kind of the message I do want.
You're absolutely right, Councilmember. If, if the applicant or any applicant's forward the financing plan, with the development agreement, with ability to move a huge housing project, this council has approved numerous housing projects in downtown. We need more of them. But we also need to have performance benchmarks in each of those agreements, and all the agreements that this council has approved, in my ear being here, there's performance benchmarks. And if they're going to be changed, we have to revisit the why.
Sure. No, and that's, that's understandable. And so we're really talking about nine months here, the project, and then it would come back to council to make an assessment. I, I, I think that's, I think that's reasonable, kind of meet and a half. Cliff, can, just want to comment on, you know, you're, you're more involved with the project and the logistics and turn up, turn up your hearing aid, Cliff.
You know, little while ago, I just replaced the batteries, so.
They're not energizers.
Thank you for calling me up. I want to submit to you that this conversation is a little bit out of context, and I'll explain. While I appreciate Council President's comments regard to the passage of time, nobody has asked why. Nobody has asked what has been accomplished specifically. And I will say that, but for those who have spent time and a significant amount of time as an integral part of the meetings and discussions we've had that have gotten us to this point, the timeframes shouldn't be arbitrary. And my big concern right now is this. We're at a point where, while we've laid out money in the six figures, the amount of money in order to get to the point of having a development agreement is going to multiply manifold. And I'm going to be blunt and honest, I am a developer. I am a longtime member of this community. Between myself and my family, we have developed and currently own over half a million feet in this area. I appreciate Councilmember Chavez in, just based on empirical evidence of our performance of the past, his confidence that we can get the financing. I don't, and I will not, spend another $400,000, $500,000 to come back here six months from now to be questioned on which i's got dotted and which t's got crossed and be scrutinized. On the come, when I'm talking about the expenditures necessary to get there, we don't, it's not the way that downtown Fresno is going to get developed. I will speak to Lot Two. There's a history behind Lot Two, and most of you were council members as that history evolves, so I'm not going to go into detail. Lot Two is included in the project and continues to be included in the project, because I think, as most, as I would encourage all of you to think, in the spirit of progress for downtown, and being much more ingrained in politics than I am, you'll understand that, number one, the issues surrounding the housing authority may be temporary. We don't know. But to extend in good faith the opportunity for those things to mend themselves, history has proven that that's a very high probability, despite what's being said or has been said or what's being promoted at this moment. With respect to Lot Two further, this project answers to fundamentally three things. The AECOM study relative to the High-Speed Rail Authority and that project, which asks for parking structures, hotels, and residential. It also speaks to the needs of which we have a great concern, because it's common knowledge that all of downtown as a whole must heal in order for downtown to move ahead. The convention center has suffered for many reasons for many years. One of the remedies that needs to be provided in order to move the convention center ahead is additional hotel space downtown. We are responding to the needs of the core in this community to move it ahead and elevate the level of quality by which our people can enjoy. Lot Two, we can put a hotel on it, and our intention has always been, always has been to construct a parking structure. It's real clear, ladies and gentlemen. We have a building that's 100,000 feet. It's on the Federal Historical Registry. Not my opinion, but I've been told over and over by many what a fine building it is and what a fine job we did in its restoration. It's real clear, based on the evidence that we're using Lot Two, that without Lot Two or the construction of a garage, we cannot occupy the building. The building today is occupied at a little over 80%. We are out of parking. No parking left. Every lot we own and the city lot is fully occupied. Without that lot, of which I am willing and able to develop, I have already made a significant investment in downtown. I didn't come to the city and say, if you give me, I will do. On the, in the context of this conversation, I am stepping up, saying, I have spent, I have successfully done, we need your support. So we accomplished two things at one time by leaving it in the ENA. So we accomplished two things at one time by leaving it in the ENA. One, the perspective positive hope that we can and will, and with the will and support that we've had from the administration, I expect that we will be able to make some kind of, reach some kind of an agreement with the housing authority. I don't care what the rumors are or what anybody says. It's what I believe and that's what I represent at this moment. And given my history of performance and given our dollars spent and our effort, I would hope that you'll take that into serious consideration. If it didn't happen, at a minimum, we'll develop it, we'll facilitate parking that is needed in addition to what we've proposed for the CVS project, let's call it that, which is also needed. IRS is at capacity. The Maston Towers is short of parking. The lot in which the purported $500,000 annual revenue is fully occupied and used a lot by the people that go into the county building. And I want to point out something about the $500,000 a year cash flow. Despite the fact that we had an agreement with the city in an effort to bring Tudor Perini downtown for a whole host of reasons, we are now paying $6,400 a month. That lot two, let me bring to your attention, goes from Tawalamie to the Merced right-of-way. It's 100 spaces, $6,400 a month currently. And by the way, in a mediation discussion, all of which you are all aware, the extending to us the option, the opportunity to negotiate an option was part of our withdrawal of the claim. But that being said.
Mr. Titellian, we shouldn't be discussing what was discussed in the mediation. That's confidential.
Okay. Forgive me for that. Nonetheless, we're paying approximately $78,000 a year. And if you take 500 minus 78, that leaves 422,000. Do the math and I can guarantee you that lot two by itself is now 78,000, not 500,000. And that I don't believe, because I can look out my window, with the average occupancy of that lot, there's no way that all of it even totals 500,000. And even if so, there's a management agreement between the county and the city, so presumably speaking, and I don't know, but presumably speaking, you should consider that at least a percentage of that revenue goes back to the county in exchange for their ownership and the management agreement that they have with the city.
Mr. Titellian, I hate to interrupt you, but I appreciate your expertise and your detail, but we're kind of way off base right now. So we're trying to figure out what we're going to do with this agreement. So let's, if we can, go back to that. And I think we've addressed it pretty well, except for my colleagues. Unless they have further questions for you, I'd suggest we go to them.
Thank you, council.
Allow me to close and ask for your support as written by the city manager's office. Thank you.
Thank you. We have councilor Ms. Barza, and then we'll try and close this.
Yes, so, Mr. Titellian, just one last before you sit down. So again, we appreciate the extreme level of detail you were giving on just downtown collectively. But given the proposal here, these, which is effectively nine months, I know in the language it says six, but I mean, we're talking about nine months here. So it's not six, it's not the 12 that you asked for. Is it realistic for you to get this done in nine months? And at which point it will come back to us anyway? Not necessarily be done, but it will come back to us? Is that, I mean, you gave kind of a long-winded answer, but is nine months feasible?
I'm not clear on your question, sir.
He said, is nine months feasible? Is nine months for the ENA feasible?
I think we can do that. I think that, given the degree of cooperation we've had from the mayor's administration, it's doable.
Okay, well, I'll go out and second the motion with, without the, without putting lot two into the surplus category at this point.
Okay. All right. We will set aside lot two from the ENA and from doing it as part of the surplus. The agreement would say.
I just have a clarifying question. So if we take it out of the ENA, if we decide to move forward at any point in the future, even with Cliff, it's subject to all of the laws?
Understood. Understood. All right, there's a motion, a second. I will modify my motion to indicate a total of nine months before it comes to the council.
Can I get a clarification?
Yes, councilmember.
Yeah, Mr. Titellian, you were asked, is nine months okay on the ENA? You made an argument that you needed 12 months, and you answered, yes, nine months is okay on the ENA. Are you saying that you're okay if this council passes the ENA for nine months instead of 12 months?
All I can say is, as a matter of compromise, we'll do our best to get it done.
Okay.
All right. The motion is to approve the ENA for nine months, and so it will not be six months, it'll be nine months for it to come back to the council with the setting aside lot two for future discussion. Any opposition to that?
I punched up, just so you know.
Councilor Capriolo?
I just wanted to know if this was agreeable with your status in negotiations thus far? Is this doable from your perspective or city manager's perspective?
Yes, I guess.
Are you referring to the nine months?
Correct.
The nine months. Staff will work the best we can. It takes two to three months to negotiate a DDA. So we will work as hard as we can with the developer to bring it back to you in nine months, if that is what the council's considering.
Okay. So it's coming upon the administration and Mr. Titellian to come back with that for us to consider?
Correct. Because the developer has a lot of work to do on his own end, but then we have to come to the table and negotiate a DDA before we take it before this body.
Understood. And this isn't preclude you from coming in the six or seven mark, month mark, and saying, we need more time?
As long as you're not saying that.
No, it's not. What I would prefer is that you tell us, not the day before this deal expires, that you need more time.
Correct.
So come back apart in advance.
Thank you.
Thank you, council president, council vice president.
I just have one comment to make and one request because I, we tend to get things very last minute, given that it's going to be a nine-month extension. I think we should at least get some kind of report, maybe, I don't know if it's through here or through a memo to the council, three months ahead of time if, if we're anticipating that we're not going to be able to meet those benchmarks.
Staff is happy to accommodate that request.
All right, there's a motion, a second. Any opposition?
Wait, I punched up.
Soria Brettafield.
Okay, so I want to be clear about the motion. So we are, the motion is to remove lot two from the CNA.
Yes, to set aside lot two for a future discussion.
Yeah, and that's something that's not going to work for Mr. Titellian, if I heard him correctly. So is that your position, Mr. Titellian, that the ENA does not work if we remove lot two?
No, we're not, I think we're not, we're not going to put surplus.
It's separate. So we're not, at this point, going to declare the property surplus, so it'd still be available for a future conversation.
No, my understanding is, city manager, or you can speak up. The ENA, as I understand it, included lot two. This motion is to remove lot two from the CNA. Nope?
His motion is to remove it from the ENA. The ENA, as we brought forward, includes lot two. However, I'm not sure that I understand what we mean by bringing it for future conversations because you technically can't negotiate on property unless it, if we're going to sell it, unless it goes to the Surplus Land Act, unless it's in this ENA, which protects it from that.
The understanding of my second to the motion was that, when I said remove lot two, I meant his amendment to make it part of the surplus act. That's what I meant.
Correct. My motion was to declare lot two surplus and begin the process for a public bidding. I agreed to remove that, but to set aside lot two from this agreement.
Yeah, so that lot two is being set aside from this agreement, and I will not support this if that's the case. I was willing to support nine months if the developer said that's fine, but now we're changing the details and removing lot two from the ENA. I won't support that.
Understood. And just for the record, I know you referenced lot two in parking. My reference to lot two was, it generates about $100,000 in revenue. According to staff, it generates about $88,000 a year in revenue.
But it's currently operating at a loss of about $3,000.
Correct. Yeah, like probably every parking facility that needs maintenance. And you also indicated to an agreement you had, and we do understand that you did not pay for parking for approximately six years. So that is a significant benefit that the city has given you as a property owner that nobody else has had that benefit of.
That's not relevant, sir.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion, second.
I was asked a question and didn't have an opportunity to answer.
Go ahead.
I would expect some good faith dealing here. Removal of lot two doesn't work for many reasons. Doesn't work.
Is lot two part of your CVS project?
Not directly, but yes, it is.
Okay.
In order to generate the impact that downtown needs, it must be. If you check into the origins as to how lot two came into the project, it's also needed significantly for parking. And I do have a plan that shows a hotel on it.
Understood. I understand your proposal to purchase our parking lot, build a parking, a private parking garage, and generate revenue from that. That's clear. Thank you, Mr. Titellian.
I think I punched up.
Councilmember Chavez?
Leave it up to our colleagues to make things more confusing. I think, let me just see if we can land this. So the agreement was nine months, we're going to set aside lot two for a future conversation because I'm not quite clear, and there's different numbers going back and forth as to what this actually generates and what the cost is in the bigger scheme of things. Mr. Titellian is saying that that's not part of CVS, but he would like to purchase it at some point to help his other properties. That's what I'm hearing, right? So the motion is to set aside that, another conversation, but to go forward with the nine months for the CVS, which is what he needs. He has the financing in place. He has the LOI almost teed up with CVS. Is that, is that clear? Is that what we're doing?
That's my understanding.
Okay. I have questions, and I want to hear from her on lot two and how it fits into this.
I would just like to note that if lot two is brought forward with the DDA at the time of the expiration in nine months, or if granted an extension, the council would still have the opportunity to not include lot two at that time. The ENA does not sell any property. We would have to come back to the council for that. Lot two has been considered a bigger scope in their project in terms of the hotel and the parking lot fitting into the bigger impact that they would like to make on Fulton and downtown.
Well, with that, I regrettably can't support it without the lot two inclusion until nine months from now, when we can address it and include it or exclude it. I want to see how it fits into the total project, the total development of that end of the mall. And to start tying up, Mr. Titellian or any developer, is really difficult because, quite frankly, I don't see anybody knocking down our doors on downtown development. Especially, I take that back. They come here with their hand out, asking for us to give money, give money. We've done that with 10, $11 million a couple of years ago, et cetera. Here's a guy that doesn't ask for money, but spit money actually out of his pocket. That's impressive to me. So I don't want to, I don't want to restrict right now that development. Let's see where we go, and then we can modify that in nine months if we need to or don't. So unless that is included for general consideration, lot two, I cannot support this.
Okay, council president.
Thank you, council.
So my second was based on the understanding that that was included. When I said remove, I meant the surplus amendment. Would you be amenable to continuing to keep lot two as part of the ENA?
Only if it shrinks the agreement to six months because that would have given the individual, he's had 15 months already. At some point, we have to bring closure to this. And just so, to respond to Councilor Capriolo, he's not asking for money at this time, but what he is asking for is for rights to our property outside of a public bid process. That is a public asset. So even though they might not be asking for cash upfront, they are asking for a public asset without going through public bid process, which is currently state law.
I'll keep my second, that's fine. Yeah.
All right. So your second is in compliance with what I'm asking? Is that correct?
It is, it is not. So I, when I seconded it, I had a misunderstanding. Upon further explanation, I think we'd rather have the nine months, that's a longer time period. And that does not preclude, I think, the developer from continuing to pursue lot two.
Yeah, to your point, Councilor Ms. Barza, if the city council chooses to determine that lot two is a developing asset and it wants to make it available for development, it would go through the surplus process. This applicant has done significant work, so he would have a significant advantage to make a proposal for lot two at that time. So it does not in any way limit the applicant's ability to submit a proposal for lot two while he continues to negotiate with CVS and every other property owner that's included in his project.
On the other hand, if that's the situation, then we should do that right now because of the expenditures he made thus far and continues to make. So why would we condition it and set him up to fail on that particular item? So again, I really honestly want to stay in my lane, but we've got to be reasonable. I've developed some projects with some friends and so forth, and the complications are awful. The worst is the federal government. Second worst is the state of California. Apparently, the third worst is the city of Fresno. So there's too many pluses and minuses that you've got to go through to get a project off the ground. And I've seen it, dealt with it, I appreciate it. So I think we're, I don't want to set anyone up to fail. We've spent a lot of time on this. We're trying to get our downtown developed properly. He seems to be on that track. So that's why I support the project, the nine months with the options, including lot two. If that's excluded, contrary to what I heard from Member Sparza, he excluded it from the surplus land aspect, which is fine, which is right where we are.
No, he's taking, he's seconding the motion to take it out.
Take it out, but now we've modified it further to say lot two is not even on the table, is my understanding. So I can't support that.
Well, council, I think we have understanding of what's on, what the motion is on the dais. If, give me a second.
Yes, yes.
There is a motion, there's a second. Let's just call for a vote, and if it fails, then we'll revisit it.
Well, I would like the applicants up here, let them say a word before we.
You know, and I just want to point out.
Can we punch up, please? This, at this point, is a conversation for the council. We've heard quite a bit from the applicant. If there's questions from the council, we will call you up. City manager, let me refer back to Councilor Card Bossi.
If my staff is listening, I have a headache. Please bring me some Advil. Mr. Titellian, I think I know what it's like to be in your position, trying to do business and deal with all this. I apologize. I'm going to pick you back off what Luis said, Councilmember Chavez said. Anyone that comes before this council, we want you to succeed. No one is trying to set you up for failure. I think that we're ready to vote on this motion.
All right. Call for the vote.
And I am, I am punched up.
Give me a second, city manager. We've had plenty of, we've had now an hour discussion, we're an hour behind schedule for lunch. Let's just call for the vote, and if it fails, we'll continue with another motion.
Point of order. You've spoken several times. I've spoken once, perhaps twice. You've spoken several times.
Councilor Mayor, Brettafield, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would like you to just, if you have anything to say before we vote on this in terms of pulling out lot two, because I think that changes the whole deal. And I agree with what Councilmember Caprioli was saying. This is not working with people. You've put money into this as opposed to people who usually come with their handout, and we're talking about giving you a year to make something happen. So the floor is yours for a few minutes, and we got to, we got to vote then.
I will start and end by saying that, with all the time, effort, and money that's gone into this relationship so far, I never anticipated such a counteroffer as, we'll cut it from nine months to six months if you want to leave the property in. As noted by the city attorney I can't speak to, lot two right now. But the direction this is going, I'm going to leave you with one question. Do you want this project or don't you? Because this discussion is killing it. So if you want to continue, I suggest amending or extending the ENA as written by the city manager's office and cut it to nine months. We'll make our best effort. In good faith, I'm willing to address benchmarks. They must entertain force majeure issues, things outside our control.
But you can, lot two, if we remove it from the ENA.
But the, you can, Lot Two, if we remove it from the E and A-
We remove it, I'm telling you, we're on our way to not having a project.
Okay, okay.
City manager's office, what are the consequences of not, you know, say this motion fails, what are the consequences at that point to the project?
We talked about the additional property tax revenue and the increase to the tax base not too long ago with you all, and I just want to point out, we do have a developer here who's willing to invest his own money in a project downtown, and this is what we wanted. This is what we wanted to open Fulton for. I, I mean, having been instrumental in the opening, this is exactly why we opened Fulton, and, and we're just asking, he's agreed to nine months, you know, keeping Lot Two, the, and then the amendments that you added, Council President Arias, with the exception of a couple, he's agreed to. So we're just asking for additional time for this developer.
Yeah, I appreciate that, city manager, and know that, you know, we all want downtown to thrive. We all support more housing, more retail, but we also have to learn from the mistakes of the past. We just had a similar E and A that was promised with multi-million dollars of development, and it went nowhere, and it locked up city land, it created domino effect, it costed us money, we had to sell city assets. So we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we read these ENAs, that we add benchmarks, and that before we sell or engage in negotiations on a public asset, that we ask some very critical questions. We ultimately are going to be asked in a couple of months to go up there and ask for the historical sales tax increase for our city, and we have to demonstrate to people that we've managed our resources accordingly. So, I, I have spent countless hours trying to figure out how to craft this in a way that makes sense for the city and for the applicant and for the public, because everybody makes claims that we're doing backroom deals and giving property away without transparency and without doing our fiduciary duty because we have relationships with developers. This is an opportunity for us to say, we've had a public debate, people have put their cards on the table, we're clear about what benchmarks are going forward, and if any developer applicant wants a right to, we are giving this applicant a right to negotiate one city parcel, the Tualami reversal.
Let's call for a question.
In order to make the, the CBS project work. In order for me to feel comfortable in giving the right to a second parcel that actually generates revenue, we need more time. So, the motion's been made, second.
Point, point of order, I'm, I'm actually going to remove my second. I do, I would like to keep the, uh, Lot Two in the project.
Okay. The second's been removed.
Oh, wait a minute.
Councilmember Card Bossi?
Okay. I just want to make it very clear, maybe city attorney can confirm. We can always extend the E and A after nine months if in good faith the applicant has been going, dotting his, crossing his t's and dotting his i's. If there's a problem with staff, he's not going to get blamed for it, so we can always extend it again, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, there's been a motion, is there a second? You called for, oh, I'm sorry.
So I, I removed my second after hearing the, the points made by the city manager's office in terms of the grander scheme of Fulton and downtown. I think at this point, I feel, I do feel comfortable with leaving Lot Two in the agreement.
Well, there isn't a motion, so do we have a motion? There is no first or second.
I'll second Member Sparza's motion.
I, I, so I, so-
Wait, there's no motion yet.
My, my motion is to essentially, I would like to see a motion where it was identical to the one you made, minus removing Lot Two from the E and A.
All right, I will make a motion to approve a nine-month agreement with Lot Two included and all the performance benchmarks that were outlined in the original motion.
Second.
All right, second. Any opposition? All right, you have some clear expectations on performance, and you'll be back to us in a few months with an update. And city manager, please do not come back the day before the expiration of the E and A and ask you for another year extension.
I'll do what I can.
Are we breaking for lunch? Should we have closed session?
We are actually done, we'll break for lunch and come back at two o'clock for a closed session. City manager, please announce a closed session.
In closed session, we have performance evaluation and labor negotiations concerning the city clerk and city attorney. I would not expect an announcement afterwards, so we're going directly into closed session at two. Thank you.